Always. Always.
Uh, we'll squeeze that, because Roman's here too, so that's why we're...
I'll call the Thursday, June 26, 2025, meeting of the Council on Planning Board to order. Uh, first item is no call. Mr. Zuck.
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Here.
Uh, okay, Mr. Scound.
Here.
Mr. Mc... Okay, I got McDonald, right? Yes. Um, Ms. Reese. Uh, Mr. Costa. Uh, Chair's present at the moment. And, uh, Mr. Bush has left us unfortunately. So, uh, next item is the approval of the planning board...
Your microphone down.
Oh, sorry. Better? Is it better? I got a green light. Good? Okay. Approval of the planning board minutes of May 29, 2025. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? And if there are none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 29 meeting as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler.
Second.
Second by Ms. Reese. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Chair votes yes. Item number three, Directors' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to introduce Roman Lombardo. Um, he joined our team February. Uh, he has bachelor's degree in business industry, Truitt College of New York.
Okay. And a master's in urban and community planning from Pratt Institute in Brooklyn. Um, he's with us due to a grant from Rhode Island Housing for towns to hire planning fellows to look at how and where we can create more housing. Um, but he's been taking on a greater role by diving into zoning and land development, uh, and he's been making a big contribution, uh, within the planning department. So, uh, I welcome him tonight, and this will be his, uh, official debut presenting to you.
Welcome, boy. We have a few items, um, that are going to be continued, says 11, 12, and 13, so we're gonna move them up without objection to the front. And, uh, 11 is a public meeting, pre-application, major land development, comprehensive permit. Owner, applicant, Almeida Investments LLC, location 475 Mendon Road, SS Platte 14, lot 14. Uh, zone is C1 with water and sewer. The applicant proposes to subdivide a lot with one lot containing an existing apartment building and the other lot to include 12 residential units with three units 25% designated as affordable. Is there anyone here? Uh, Mr. Uh, Poddington? Well, any, any reason for continuing?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Scott Poddington for the applicant. Uh, basically, it's a question at this point, we had a, um, a TRC meeting, um, some adjustments, uh, gonna be made to the plan, um, and as a result of the TRC meeting. Um, and also, quite frankly, quite honestly, it was because of the, the length of the agenda, I wasn't sure. I mean, you guys deserve a break after 10, right? So, I felt like, you know, um, it was probably, as far as I checked this morning, and most of the matters are still going forward, so it was kind of a dual reason for it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board have any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, uh, continue item 11 to the regularly scheduled July meeting.
Motion by Mr. Butler.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Costa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Item number 12, public meeting, pre-application, minor land development, conservation development, project name Oak Tree Circle. Owner, Almeida Irrevocable Trust. Applicant, high-tech construction. Location, 147 Pound Road, SS Platte 41, lot 49. Zone is A2 with no sewer or water. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into three lots. One lot with an existing single-family house, one lot with five three-bedroom detached condos, and the third lot to be dedicated as open space. Is anyone here to represent Mr. Poddington?
Uh, Mr. Chairman again, Scott Poddington for the applicant. Um, this even more so was as a result of the TRC meeting. We had, uh, this is also being presented as a conservation development, and, um, there were several questions. Um, there's a slope, uh, the grading's an issue, um, there were some drainage questions, there was site distance, um, and, uh, many issues were brought up. Uh, there was also the removal of, uh, of an island, um, by the fire department had requested that. So, the, uh, the engineer had plenty of work to do on it, and he suggested, and I thought that it was appropriate, that before we came back, even at an informal concept review, that we have a much tighter plan and, uh, as a result of the TRC recommendations.
Board have any questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move item 12 to the regularly scheduled July meeting.
Motion by Mr. Butler.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Costa. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Mr. Poddington, is there anything else?
Excuse me?
Is there anything else?
No, no.
Okay. Item number 13, public hearing, major change to final plan. Owner, applicant, uh, Eric Yeggen, Vicon Properties. Project name, the preserve at Haunting Hill. Location, Meadowbrook Drive, SS Platte 35, lot 188. Zoning R3 with public water and public sewer. The applicant requests to not construct sidewalks as shown on the recorded final plan. Is anyone here to represent the applicant? Okay. Pleasure of the board.
I don't, I don't have an objection to continuing it, but we've continued it several times, so are we gonna get it at some point?
Yeah, we continued it the first go-round, it was advertised incorrectly, so now it's been, it's been, there's a, there was a new public notice, which is correct now, but, um, um, so the applicant asked us to continue this to next month's meeting.
Can I, what's the reason for...
There was an error. That's really loud.
Voice of God.
There was an error putting it on the agenda. It shouldn't have been on the agenda this month.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move, uh, item number 13 to the regularly scheduled July meeting.
I have a motion by Mr., excuse me, Mr. Butler.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scound. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. The ayes have it, and motion carries. Back to page one. Item number four, zoning board review recommendation. Owner, applicant, St. Aiden's Church Corporation. Location, 1460 Diamond Hill Road, SS Platte 20, lot 24. Zoning A2 with public water and sewer. The applicant requests a variance to install a freestanding sign in an agricultural zone. Uh, before we begin, uh, if there's anyone here who was in the audience, who came to, uh, listen to, uh, the, the previous three, uh, items on the agenda that have been continued, uh, they won't be heard this evening. Otherwise, we'll move forward.
Excuse me?
Uh, Mr...
We'll let the, the planning department presents first, then we'll let you go.
Okay. Mr. Lombardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's a pleasure to meet everyone here today. Um, St. Aiden, St. Patrick's Parish merged with St. Patrick in 2018. He exists, the pre-existing sign is pre-existing and non-conforming, and it predates the merger and omits the St. Patrick's name. Additionally, the, the existing sign is placed next to the church and only faces northbound traffic on Diamond Hill Road. The applicant is currently in an agricultural zone where freestanding signs are not permitted. Article 138E1 of the zoning ordinance states that properties in agricultural or residential zones are only allowed, are allowed only one wall sign or window sign in which the total area shall not exceed four square feet. The applicant is seeking a, to add a freestanding sign measuring 28 square feet while removing the pre-existing non-conforming freestanding sign. The applicant requests a variance from this amounting to a relief from the wall or window sign requirement in the A2 agricultural district in which they are located. Uh, the planning department finds that the proposed sign will improve wayfinding for the church and its parishioners while remaining compatible with the surrounding streetscape. The proposed sign does not reduce visibility from the street's oncoming traffic nor to parishioners exiting or entering the parking lot. Department finds the proposal to meet the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan and recommends the planning board submit a favorable recommendation to the zoning board review.
Does the board have any questions? Hearing none, we'll hear from the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Wendy Regan with Mandeville Sign. We're located at 12 Breakneck Hill Road in Lincoln, Rhode Island, and, uh, we were contacted by St. Aiden's... Oh, I also have with me this evening Joe from the parish and Mr. Charles Reddahan, also from the parish. Uh, we were contacted by St. Aiden's, uh, to see what could be done for a new sign, uh, based on the merger with St. Patrick's. Uh, the site, as mentioned, does have a previously existing legally non-conforming ground sign. Uh, the location of the ground sign, however, is, is very far off the road, uh, almost at the front of the building. Um, this location for any, you, you are probably all familiar with the site, but if you are not, the site has two naturally occurring elements that would certainly qualify as a hardship, one being the change in grade from the street level in front of the church to the actual building. It goes down, I would say, anywhere between eight and 10 feet from the road's surface. Uh, the other issue is the road is, um, has a significant curve right at, at the, uh, frontage of the church, which results in a sign being difficult to be seen from both directions unless it is brought up closer to the street front. It's a very simple, non-illuminated panel sign, um, by the town's, um, measurement formula, which would be a single rectangle. The sign does measure 28 square feet, but the design of the sign is a very simple rectangle with what I would call a, a half moon, um, at the top to allow for the symbol of the, the church. So if you were to really look at the, the physical area of the sign's surface, it's actually closer to 20 square feet than 28 square feet. Um, again, I know that you have a very full agenda this evening, you have seen the plans, we've heard from the planning, um, the planner staff comments, so I think instead of continuing to speak about this application, I would just entertain any questions that the board may have.
Uh, Mr. Butler.
I'd say, to, the, the sign is beautiful, so I was just curious about the material. Is it a wood sign? Is it a PVC sign?
It is not, it is not wood. It is actually, uh, an aluminum sign, but because of the matte finish that was chosen, it really does look more like a wooden sign. Um, it's not going to be shiny or flashy in any way.
And I know you said it was, uh, non-illuminated, so there's no place for spotlights up on it, or just... Yeah, it's, it's, it's really nice, I think it'll make a big difference to folks finding the church.
Other questions? I just, just have one. Um, do you know exactly where the right-of-way is, the right-of-way line is on Diamond Hill Road?
Um, we actually relied on the town's tax maps to, to lay out the site.
Okay.
Uh, I do not have an actual, like, a, a, um, a Class 1 survey for the property.
The only reason why I ask is I don't want the state to come by and say, "You gotta move that sign."
Correct.
I used to work for DOT, and I kind of know about those kinds of things, I just, you know, would emphasize that that was one thing that should be checked, just in case.
Could certainly check with the, the parish to see if they happen to have a survey. If not, I would, um, it would be up to the church, really, their decision as to whether or not to, um, employ a, uh, surveyor to come out and mark, um, the edge of the right-of-way.
There may even be a, that, a bomb close by, 'cause that's a curve, on the curve, usually that's where you might find some bombs, but, yeah, I would definitely, um, check that out so that you don't run into any issues, uh, with the state. Any other questions?
Just, just curious, how close to the street will this sign be? To Diamond Hill Road?
Uh, we were, um, locating the sign approximately four feet off the paved, edge of pavement.
Edge of pavement or the sidewalk?
The sidewalk, yeah. It's, it is actually, it's dimensioned on the plans that were submitted, but...
Looks like it's four feet from the edge of the sidewalk?
Four feet from the sidewalk?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. It's a good chance that you're on your own property, but...
I, yeah, we kind of assumed that the, the sidewalk was probably a, it was a good chance that the inside edge of the sidewalk was the extent of the right-of-way.
I'm going by the pole, utility poles have to be, you know, close to the right-of-way line. Okay, any other questions? Pleasure of the board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send a recommendation to the zoning board review that the proposed petition meets the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan as outlined in the staff report dated June 18th, 2025.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Reese. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, zoning board review recommendation. Applicant owner, Joseph Ann Deborah Lepore. Location, 160 Pine Swamp Road, SS Platte 49, lot 149. Zoning is A2 with no public water or sewer. The applicant requests a front yard variance of 25 feet to build a house. Ms. Lombardo.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting a variance for setbacks on their undeveloped wooded property. The current lot was created from an administrative subdivision in 2020 through the merger of four smaller lots. The minimum required setback in this district is 75 feet, and the applicant requests a 50-foot setback. Um, so 25 feet of relief is requested. The lot's currently constrained by wetlands and wetland buffers, and only a small portion in the southeast section of the lot is considered buildable. In the past, um, Riedem has given approval to build in the upland portion of the parcel, given that the building setback has changed from 75 feet to 50. This is to avoid disturbing the wetlands. The applicant previously submitted a plan to Riedem in 2022 that complied with the 75-foot front yard setback. However, the proposed location infringed on the 50-foot wetland buffer, and to comply with Riedem, the applicant has shifted the house further south, requiring a setback relief. The planning department finds that the proposed house is in a, uh, undeveloped part of town and not anticipated to diminish the general character of the surrounding neighborhood. The house would sit, uh, the house site is the only reasonable and practical location to build a house, given the wetlands, and sits angled away from oncoming traffic and will be less visible from the road. The planning department finds the project as proposed to be consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan and recommends forwarding a positive recommendation to the zoning board review for the requested variance for front yard setback.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Lombardo? Good to go.
Thank you so much.
Uh, is the applicant here?
Mr. Chair, the applicant is online. If you have any questions for them?
Okay. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send a recommendation to the zoning board review that the project as proposed is consistent, is consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan as outlined in the staff report dated June 18th, 2025.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zuck. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Ayes have it. And chair votes yes, so motion carries. Mr. Dombroger, you're here, I didn't even see you.
It's like, uh, 6:35?
Okay. Okay, so for the record, please note that, uh, Mrs. Dombroger had, uh, entered the chambers at 6:35 PM. Item number six, this is a public hearing, preliminary plan, major land development, comprehensive permit, project name Haley's Commons. Owner, applicant Haley's LLC. Location, 75 Mandeville Hill Road, SS Platte 54, lots 7 and 8. Zoning R1 with public water and sewer. The applicant requests approval to construct two, three buil-, uh, three-unit buildings, one two-unit building, and convert an existing building into two units. Uh, three of the 10 units for sale will be affordable. The project requires adjustments for multi-household dwelling in an R1 zone, residential density, building setbacks, lot coverage, building height, and parking space setback. This item was continued from the May 29, 2025 planning board meeting. Mr. Morica.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this project has been in the works for a while. Um, it came before the TRC in October of 2023 and before the planning board in June 2024 for a pre-application meeting. It's a comprehensive permit application for 10 units, three of which will be affordable for 99 years. Uh, the existing vacant building will be converted to two residential units, and three new buildings will be constructed to house the other eight units. And over the past year or so, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about residential density and density bonuses for comp permits, comp permits, and the number of bonus units, you know, the planning board can grant. Um, and for development, that's 25% affordable, that minimum bonus is five units per acre. Um, in this case, the applicant is requesting, uh, density bonus of about 14 and a half units per acre. That basically stems from years ago, when the applicant came to the planning department, about two years ago or so, to talk about developing these lots. And this is all before the state changed legislation relating to comp permits and having this formula for density bonuses. So, uh, Mr. Stevens, Jonathan Stevens, the previous director and I, we met with the applicant, and we asked him if he'd be interested in creating affordable housing on these two properties. And ultimately, we agreed, um, that three out of the 10 units being affordable was reasonable. Um, and as shown on a map I sent to you by email this morning, and we left with you here, um, a 10-unit building is certainly not out of character with the neighborhood. There's a lot of other larger multifamily buildings along Mandeville Hill Road and in the vicinity. Um, in terms of adjustments, because the number, due to the number of units and the parking provided, um, the project does require a number of adjustments for the zoning ordinance. Mainly, these are related to setbacks. And I want to address the, the letter from, uh, the abutter's attorney, and just some things I wanted to clarify in there. Um, the letter mentions the need for use variance and/or a zone change. So for comp permits, instead of having to request variances, comprehensive permit applicants, they're entitled to what are called adjustments, um, municipal government subsidies that help construct affordable housing. Subsidies can be monetary, but mostly they take the form of zoning incentives, such as increased density, building multifamily dwellings in a single-family zone, as well as dimensional relief. So there's no use variance or rezones that come into play here. Regarding the setbacks that were called out, um, for the deck and the roof eve, um, a deck can be no more than four feet from a rear lot line. In this case, it's about three feet, so that's gonna be one additional adjustment, um, that the applicant will, will need. In terms of the roof eve, we, we neglected to account for that. It's supposed to be 25 feet from the rear lot line. The plan shows that the building is setback 10 feet, but the eve overhangs another two feet, so, um, two extra feet, but there's more relief, 17 feet of relief, um, would need to be granted. And all of these incentives and adjustments, um, they should be granted, provided they have no negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood or surrounding environment. And I'll let the applicant speak to, um, the situation with the neighbor, with the, uh, neighbor, but overall, the planning department finds that the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan to create affordable housing, and we're recommending approval with two conditions. The first is to merge the lots, and the second is to consult with Rhode Island Department of Transportation to establish and adopt a spot along Mendon Road, um, to create some landscaping there.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Morica?
Thank you.
Uh, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Michael Resnick on behalf of the applicant, uh, and owner. Um, I had the chance, uh, to review the staff report, uh, before this evening. Uh, we agree with the findings, it's clearly a positive report, we have no issue with any of the conditions. Um, I'm joined here tonight by our land use expert who did submit, uh, a report to Ed Pimentel, uh, along with a representative from Insight Engineering, Josh Morrow, who's our engineer, who's been working in tandem with Paul Carlson, who's the professional engineer, uh, on this project. Just briefly, before turning it, uh, over to Mr. Pimentel, there is a history here, Mr. Morica described some of it to you, the pre-app process, the TRC process. I wasn't here for that process, Mr. Pimentel was, so I'm gonna rely on him to provide you some background, um, relative, uh, to those presentations, um, and kind of a little bit of the history of the project. Uh, I will note, um, apropos to, uh, Mr. Morica's comment, that we did receive a memorandum, uh, from attorney Carol Ricker, uh, regarding, uh, the abutter, uh, the abutter gentleman, uh, named Mr. Ozken Ediman at 95 Mandeville Road. And the reason for the continuance, uh, from the last hearing was, it wasn't until about a day before that we realized that there was opposition to the project, and, and an opportunity to try, try to resolve any issues before we came, before the board, we agreed to continue the matter. Um, and, um, it, it wasn't until recently that we got some substance about what the issues were, and what I can tell you is, what I know is what you know is contained in the memo. I've spoken to the developer, um, and to try to obviate this issue, we, we did advise attorney Ricker, our client, that Mr. Menard would be willing to put up a six-foot, uh, privacy fence along, um, that contiguous, uh, property line. Uh, there is a fairly robust landscaping plan, but we also offered up to them to take a look at the landscaping plan, is there something else, some other type of variety, something else that you would like to see? So I just want to represent to the board that we, we, we did make an attempt to obviate those issues. I cannot say, uh, that they've been obviated, 'cause clearly, uh, a submission was made. Uh, and with that, unless you have any questions for me, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Pimentel.
Board have any questions for Mr. Resnick?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Edward Pimentel for the record, P-I-M-E-N-T-E-L. I know it has been some time since we've been here, as the board well knows, the law's about to change again, but there is, there was no opportunity for a master plan submission, so you submit at the pre-application, you have conversation with the planning board and discussion, get some guidance, propose the presentation, with that guidance, you then go off and you fully engineer and design the, uh, project. That's why it's taken some time, because there is no conceptual stage. The pre-app set, that, that, in, in part, is the conceptual stage right now until the law is changed again. So as we had discussed approximately a year ago, um, the density has pretty much stayed the same, uh, we've made the improvements that we had promised to make, um, let's go over them. Number one, we are going to abolish in perpetuity a pre-existing legal non-conforming commercial usage of this property. I was previously involved with that commercial entity when it was a pub. We had made proposals for zone changes and to intensify it, that wasn't well-supported. There was really no desire to want to continue commercial usage. That's when we got together with the client, went in a different direction, and met with staff. Number two, the property is, as this board knows, is... Number two, the property, as this board knows, is well disturbed already. It's well disturbed with a hot surface. There are no drainage controls. It's unimpeded access. There's almost upwards of a hundred feet of curb opening on Manville and unimpeded on the side roadway. What we're going to do is seal off onto the major thoroughfare. We're going to landscape and provide curb appeal there with greenery in addition to architecturally converting the commercial building to make it a residential appearance and match the other buildings. And then we're going to control the traffic flow to the side street, which is what is preferred from a safety and health perspective. The curb opening will also be aligned with the curb opening of the housing development, dense housing development across. And our density is pretty much on point with that density. They're both in the ratio of like a twenty-four to twenty-eight hundred square feet per unit. We're actually even less dense, some of the developments further west, but in regards to these two developments, we're right on point. We're keeping all the parking and traffic flow sandwiched between the buildings, so the first focal point of this development will be the architecture of the building and the greenery from both roadways. That's why we concentrated everything to the side road. Once again, we're going to introduce real drainage controls, real greenery. The density is something that we have to work with, as I noted over a year ago when we were before the board. As such, we're providing in excess of the twenty-five percent affordability, we're providing three, albeit ten units. And as your plan has already said, I went through the incomprehensible plan rather thoroughly and excerpted a lot of information surrounding this property. It's all classified high density. There's even anomaly of a commercial classification. The neighborhood going west is all high-density developed. This really is a property that's in a transitional phase. It was commercially used. Then when you go north, northeast is when it gets a little less dense and you get to the educational institution. This is right on that cusp. I think it serves in a rather profound residential manner now as versus commercial, and I think it's more appropriate. So having said that, the standards that we need to meet are established by the Affordable Housing Statute. So first one was consistency with the comprehensive plan. I feel we meet that, so the staff, I could read quotes from the comp plan. Number two, obviously, we need some adjustments to balance out the provision of housing. There's just no way to avoid these adjustments, what would otherwise be known as variances. But the burden on us is not true burdens as they are associated with variances, but it's the provision of the balance of affordable housing. I believe we meet that. And then finally, we are addressing need, as denoted in my plan, and we will, like I said, provide more appropriate ingress and egress and access in a much safer manner. I don't know if the board has any questions.
Spot, have any questions for Mr. Pimentel? Or Mr. Zuck?
Maybe it's more of a comment or a reaction than a question, but there's a lot of adjustments that are being requested. I certainly understand the adjustments for the pre-existing building. But aside from that, there's a request for front yard setback, front yard setback, rear setback, front yard setback, parking space setback, lot coverage, building height. The density ends up being eighteen units an acre, whereas the surrounding neighborhood is estimated to be about fifteen units an acre, so it's, this project would be denser than the surrounding area. And all of that for three affordable units. So I just feel like when I look at the plan, I kind of feel like it's attempting to squish a lot of units into the lot, and it just feels like the boundaries are being stretched, if you know what I mean.
So, and we had, this was by far the greatest component of the discussion we had at the conceptual stage was the same issue. So the state statute establishes now a new baseline threshold, whereas before you'd come before a community and the bottom line threshold was what does the zoning regulations allow? And then everything thereafter, the argument would be that density seems rather excessive. So what the state did says, we need a higher threshold because the argument is always we're asking for too much. And that's why they established that as the minimum density bonus. And I know the position of this body, and that's why we got into this conversation then. The economic feasibility of the project just requires this. If you reduce density, you also reduce the provision of affordable housing. So what you're getting on it is you're getting more units counted towards your overall year-round housing stock and not enough units to offset. So it doesn't make any dent, but yet you're still going to maximize usage of the property. So in other words, if we cure some of the variances and we start getting rid of some of the density, I'm so sorry. If we reduce density in order to eliminate some of these adjustments, then we're also eliminating the need or the provision of affordable housing out of this project. The property is going to still be maxed out, right? The property is going to be maxed out. Whether we gain more ten feet around it is going to be constrained, but we're not making a dent, we're not accomplishing what we're trying to achieve. This property is an anomaly in the town. It's a commercial property. It's already well disturbed. When we say we're not meeting the coverages, the property is not meeting coverages now, and there are no drainage controls. So we're adding and establishing things that for all purposes would not be something that would be allowed if it wasn't that this is a pre-existing commercial property. We're trying to cure those and then in return get some benefits, yeah, for the applicant to make it economically feasible and for the town. I think it's a very equitable trade-off. And as for the density of the surrounding, many of those properties are not affordable housing projects. So those are dense projects that contribute to the town housing-wise, which is needed, but we're offsetting our contribution and offsetting their contribution. So those densities would be appropriate if they were meeting their need. We may be a little more dense, but we are providing affordable housing, and in fact, an extra unit would be offsetting some of their contribution. So I think it's a real win-win situation for the town, regardless of the number of adjustments.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McDonald?
Mr. McDonald? Thank you. I would like to back up. Mr. Zuck, when I looked at this, I can't recall any individual application in my experience needing this many variances. I recall years ago, and I agreed with him at the time, which is why I still remember it, and he can correct me if my memory is incorrect, but Mr. Scound at one point, when it was coming up for a vote in which an applicant was requesting a number of, quite a bit of relief, not relief to this extent, and he said, I'm paraphrasing, "We have rules. There are zoning regulations, there are land use regulations, zoning ordinance. We have rules. What are we about if we shred the rules in attempting to justify approving an application?" And when I look, when I look at what's required for relief, I say to myself, how does this application conform to the rules? And I apologize if I make a wrong, an incorrect inference, but we, and I have some remarks that I wish to make, perhaps when you ask for remarks, Mr. Chairman, before the vote. We have to be careful and not allow the town to be held hostage to a claim that if we don't allow this relief, if we don't approve the application, the applicant will not develop and the town will lose affordable housing units. And the comments that I wish to make, they're general comments about the agenda tonight I will make when you call for comments before a vote on this application, because this application and several others on the agenda this evening fall into the density bonus category. Thank you.
Anyone else at this point?
I have a comment in regard to, you know, the abutter. I've seen this situation occur near where I live, where when we start to make a variance for the closeness of the property line, and then we have an overhang on top of that, it does impede on the privacy of the abutter to a great degree. And I think the, you know, we have to take into account what the appearance of this project is going to look like to the abutter. And like Mr. McDonald said, I mean, we're making a variance, and we are not envisioning as much as what the abutter is. And I have a concern in regard to that.
So we, as Attorney Resnick stated, because we did reach out to both the abutter and through their attorney, obviously, and so we actually took some proactive steps just on our own and started to look visually to the best that we could from a visual because of the topography, what would be the view corridor? And if we rotated the building, if we pushed the development forward, now we create more of a frontal on the roadway, maybe that would be preferable. It would shift everything because we were trying to balance the positioning of the buildings and a green buffer all the way around and create more of a curb appeal on the main thoroughfares. So we thought about that, but even shifting it the extra ten feet or so, because of the topography and the slope, the angle on the view is not going to change much. It's, so this isn't a level, a butter to a butter, where if you move it away and get separation, maybe you can screen it somehow, it's a direct line of sight. That's why we started thinking, maybe if we got together with them and thought of a new, some kind of vegetative program that could help because of the topography and the slope down, that's the only thing we could come up with. Distance is not going to matter because of the topography. So it's, we tried, put our thinking caps on, and that's for that very reason. All I can offer, obviously, I may not address concerns of some of the board members, but once again, in regards to density, and I feel like I need to address it, every property is unique, and that's why even when you come before the zoning board review, there's no such thing as establishing, you know, once you've approved something, that it's something you need to approve all the time. There's no such thing as precedence, even from this board's perspective, because you got to look at the uniqueness of the property itself. If this was an undisturbed property, and we were coming in and we were starting to first put the curb cuts and the engineering all about, maybe the density could be a little lower, but we are also addressing issues that we need to address that were mistakes of the past, they were grandfathered in. So you got to balance all those things, and you got to balance neighborhood character, too. This is a pretty dense neighborhood, where maybe a neighborhood that's not so dense, the density would not fit in so much. I think the board should take all that into consideration, hopefully, and that is the conditions of the property and the conditions of the neighborhood. And we did, we did take all that into consideration, the setback, and trying to figure out if there was any way to avail that concern.
Yeah, well, my concern, too, is that, I mean, I looked at the property, and I think it needs to be approved. I don't have a problem with that, but I also have a problem with the neighbors. They've been there longer, and I think they need to approve, within reason, some of the improvements. And I'm not sure that's been done to the abutter's approvals at this point. I'd like to hear from the abutter if that's the case.
Mr. Cusack?
Mr. Pimentel, I haven't visited this site in quite some time, but if I remember correctly, and I can't see the lines, the numbers on these lines, the elevation of this property is pretty high as it meets Manville Hill. Am I correct or not?
The property behind starts to shoot up.
Yeah.
Right. This property is pretty level. The topography starts to go slight, and then it shoots up from our property back. It starts to go up really steep, yeah.
But isn't that sloped area coming down as part of this project, isn't it?
But, yes.
So what I'm getting at is the water. Where's the water going to go?
I'm going, I don't want to address engineering principles because that's not my field of expertise. We have the project designer here.
That's fine, that's fine. I just, it's a concern of mine at the moment.
Because we are going to introduce drainage controls that are non-existent now. We're going to maintain the drainage on site, but I don't want to address, because that's not my field.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I could just briefly double-check.
Certainly.
Mr. Pimentel, in preparing for this evening, did you read relevant applicable state laws?
I read the Affordable Housing Statute thoroughly.
As well as local ordinances and Planning Board rules and regulations?
Correct, regarding the comp permit process.
And is the testimony that you offered in your presentation tonight, as well as the testimony that you provided in response to the board members, to a reasonable degree of certainty, as a professional, your expertise as a land use expert?
It is.
And is it also true that you submitted a report to the board prior to this evening?
I did. This report has been slightly tweaked because the design had to tweak a little bit when, once we proceeded to the engineering phase of this, but it pretty much mirrors almost the report that was submitted pre-app.
All right. And the opinions that you've expressed therein, similar to this evening, are they also, to a reasonable degree of engineer, excuse me, as a land use expert?
Yes.
And did you also have a chance to review the Planning Board staff report?
Yes.
And you're aware that there were findings made under the comprehensive permit relative to this preliminary application, correct?
I am.
And those were positive findings, correct?
That is correct.
And do you agree to a reasonable degree certainty in your profession as a land use expert, are you in accord with those findings?
Yes.
That's all I have from Mr. Pimentel at the moment.
Is there an engineer here?
Thank you.
There is. Next, I'd like to present Josh Morrow, who's the engineer who's been working with Mr. Carlson, who is the professional engineer that stamped the plans. There's just one comment that I wanted to make in response to some of the board members' comments. Mr. Pimentel indicated it's very important to look at each matter kind of independently, each property, because it has its own items and its own issues, and that you really don't create precedent by granting an approval on a particular project as it relates to maybe another application. What I also want to present is there is a history here, and the law that's in front of you right now is not the law that just passed. The law that just passed restores the master plan, because developers, planners throughout the state thought it better for somebody or a developer that's looking to do a comprehensive permit to understand before they incur the engineering costs and all the costs that go into doing a project, am I vested in my zoning, in my density? Well, that was taken away, and that was not available to Mr. Menard in this process. So his pre-app and his TRC, for all intents and purposes, acted as that master plan. They didn't give him a vested right, but it was his opportunity to present to the board, to present what the concept was and to get feedback. Now, I wasn't here, and you were here, so I'm not going to tell you what happened, but I'll tell you that I reviewed the transcripts, I reviewed the videos, and in my opinion, the feedback was very, very positive about this proposal. So the only thing that I'm asking, it's not a legal argument, it's just, it's a request that you understand that because that master plan wasn't there, Mr. Menard relied upon feedback from staff, feedback from town departments, feedback from the Planning Board, and there has been a gap in how long it took to get back to you. The reason for that is there's no master plan. He went and he engineered this complete project. So I just would like the board to consider not just the history of this property, the fact that what's there is presently non-conforming, but also the history and why this presentation and this proposal came into fruition. And I think that that is very clearly highlighted in the staff report, the history here, and I think it's very important to the board's consideration, because it's not a slippery slope. It's a project that was presented at a point in time several years ago, and the feedback was, this is a project that we'll support. And he went and he developed it. He went and he engineered it, excuse me. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Morrow. And Mr. Morrow, I'd like you to give a brief explanation, but we know from the members of the board that they're very interested in understanding how the property is going to manage stormwater and the like. So why don't we start?
Do you need my name for the record? Yes, please. Joshua Morrow, J-O-S-H-M-O-R-R-O-W. Is, should I jump right into stormwater? Yeah, not to be repetitive, we'll get right into it. This project, stormwater work is done. To answer your question, we have a DEM permit in hand. That uphill topography does slope down onto our site. That will be captured on site in a closed drainage system. That'll be taken to underground infiltration. That'll be taken to underground infiltration. And it'll be taken care of that way, mitigated that way. Some of the roofs are taken in the same manner to separate systems. There's a total of three systems on the property that has been approved, and that's the mitigation plan. Aside from that, for the record, I'll just go ahead and say there's 10 units on the property proposed. 28 bedrooms is what's currently proposed. We do have water on the site. We do have sewer. Stormwater, again, is handled. There's an existing building that's going to be converted, residential. I'll open it up for discussion at that point. I think most of the project's covered.
Board have questions?
Did you just say the existing building is going to be converted?
Well, it's proposed to remain, and there's two units that are proposed out of that.
And that used to be the box?
Is that what it used to be?
Yes, yes.
There probably two units of that?
Yep.
Mr. Costa, if everyone could speak into their mic.
I'm sorry. Okay. Did you hear my questions?
Yes, that is correct. Two units converted. I believe that was covered.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, that was the proposal since the pre-app stage. Was always conversion. When that was a pub, there was already work being done upstairs, some sort of weird odd conversion. When I got involved then, there was questions being raised, hey, what is going on up there? And that's, so it's kind of going in that direction. Obviously, the exterior does not look very residential. That'll change architecturally. But, yeah, unit up, unit down.
Just one other item that I would add, Mr. Costa. We're not relying on this because of the comp permit feature. However, just generally speaking, pursuant to general laws, the conversion of a commercial building to a residential unit is now by right, unless there is an environmental land use restriction on the property. We don't need to rely on that here, for one, because we're actually taking a non-conforming commercial use and making it residential. But I just, there's a concern about the rehabilitation aspect. Obviously, there's a building, there's building code issues, there's fire code issues. But that concept of taking a commercial piece and making it residential does not in and of itself require zoning relief. So I would, or any type of relief. So I would just mention that.
Are there any other questions?
One second.
You have questions?
Father was asked to speak. I just talked a little bit.
Yeah. As there are no other questions, I will open up to the floor of the public hearing. So if anyone has any questions or comments regarding this proposal, please come to the podium, give us your name and your address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Father Vasili Likkwar. I'm V A S I L Y, last name L I C K W A R. And I'm the priest at Holy Dormition Orthodox Church, which is on top of the hill at the end of Fountain Street, which is a paper street. The church has been there since 1907. I've been pastor of the church for the past 40 years. I know nothing about zoning regulations and laws and variances, and I'm not here to speak about that. I'm just here to speak about very practical matters that are of concern to my parish. I'm not opposed, none of us are opposed to affordable housing. But the area between Mendon Road and the beginning of the Septilney Bridge that leads to Manville has already six condominium units. There are condos on both sides of the church and one on the backside of the church, Valley View. So, and that certainly is a population and automobile traffic concern. Coming down Fountain Street towards Manville Hill Road from the church, that Fountain Street is not a two-lane street. One car can pass down or up the road at one time. Coming to the end of Fountain Street at Manville Hill Road, it's almost impossible to see traffic coming from the right-hand side. There's a curve in the road, and the tavern that's there has always blocked the vision of traffic. And there's more traffic, and a lot of cars are speeding. About 25 years ago, I requested that caution light be put there. And my request was refused. And instead, a yield sign was nailed to a tree. The exit road coming out from the condominiums next door, I think, is rustic apartments. And that exit sign is often overgrown by branches on the tree. We're also concerned about if these condos are built and if there are children living in those condos, where are they going to play? In the parking lot by the condos? Also, if there are visitors coming to the condos and there's not enough room in that parking lot, will they be parking on Fountain Street? And if they're parking on Fountain Street, that can be a problem, especially on Sundays and on big holidays, and also in the wintertime. It's, the town does plow that road to a certain point, but it plows only down the middle of the road and it leaves snow embankments on both sides of the road. And that road is also very, very slippery in the winter. So that's a concern of ours as well. An aesthetic concern is that those buildings are supposed to be three stories high. What will that look like on the corner? In the 40 years that I've been pastor of that church, we acquired two and a half acres that belonged to a previous owner who lived in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And we cleaned up those two and a half acres, removed more than 150 trees. So it's easier to see the church now from Manville Hill Road. So those are the concerns that I would like to express on behalf of my community. One last concern is emergency access. If an ambulance or a fire engine needs to get, come up the hill by the church or just to get into the condos and cars are parked on Fountain Street, is that going to be an obstacle for emergency vehicles? So thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for me?
I have one. As far as Fountain Street, there are no parking signs or anything of that nature on the?
No. No, and no one parks on Fountain Street. But the church has its own parking lot on top of the hill. But no one parks on, I mean, sometimes cars will park on Fountain Street of visitors that are at the neighboring property. But none of our church cars ever park on Fountain Street or anybody else.
Well, I've been up there, I've been to your church area. Once, and quite nice.
Yeah, it's a very historic church. And many people know about that. It was built when Czar Nicholas II was still alive, and he was actually one of the contributors to the building of our church in Cumberland.
I started out as an architecture major. When I had been up there, I said, you know, it's something to see.
Well, thank you.
And it's quite, it's quiet up there, though.
It's very quiet. That's why we bought the property, to keep it quiet around the church. So on the Sundays after services, kids can play out on the churchyard and we can see them. And it's, so it's a safe area, and it's a very serene area in Cumberland. And we'd like to keep it that way, if we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Resnick?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just briefly respond to two of the father's comments. One relative to his concern about parking.
Certainly.
So there'll be 22 parking spaces on site. Each unit of the three new buildings will have a single car garage with a driveway, which we believe by measurement would be capable of fitting an additional car, which would actually equal 16 additional spaces. And then there's six uncovered spaces in the lot. So there is, I believe, a surplus of parking. And then just there was a concern relative to fire safety and the ability of the fire department to get in to serve the development. I'd like to have Mr. Morrow just address that briefly, if that's okay.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Sure. So correspondence with the fire department has been made. We started that a while ago, and since our submission, we've got some answers. Although the current plan in front of the board does not currently address their comments, we have made provisions on a plan that is suitable as we plan to continue forward with this development.
With that being said, what specific comments were, did we see from the fire department?
Well, it was about entering the site in their turning radius. We've taken measures to confirm a fire truck is capable of getting on site.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Resnick? Very briefly, I would just ask Mr. Morrow, the testimony you provided tonight and the responses to the board, have they been to a reasonable degree of engineering certainty?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this point? Is there anyone in the queue?
Yes, I believe the attorney for our separate abutter. You can unmute yourself, Carol, and go ahead and member.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I just, I will just rest on the memorandum primarily that I submitted on behalf of my client. I would agree with Attorney Resnick that he did reach out to me and did express that he and the appropriate people tried to address the concerns that my client has regarding the proximity of the development to his yard, his property. And the only further thing I'll add is that my client has been at that residence for 20, over 20 years, or 20 years, I believe. And so for him, it's a startling and stark development in the neighborhood for him, despite that there are apartment buildings in the surrounding area. And the only thing that I would add is that I would agree with the members of the board who have suggested that if this, if these adjustments, as they're termed in the Affordable Housing Act, have no parameters or limits, then they obviate the zoning ordinance. And I don't know that it was the intent of the legislature to completely obviate the zoning ordinance of various towns. That may be the case. We may find that out down the road, if there are appealable issues at any point with these types of developments. But the main question is how much is too much? To have every border requesting a variance or an adjustment, which is essentially a dimensional variance, and then the other relief sought, it seems extreme. Respectfully to the developer, I understand his position. And I just know that my client is incredibly concerned about looking down on the rooftops of these apartment buildings. I also mentioned he's very concerned about the fire hazards. And that, I do believe that Attorney Resnick did offer the natural buffer, but I think that's also a concern for him. So, you know, ultimately, I think his position is fairly well laid out in my memo. And I'd just like the board to take that into consideration in terms of a long-term resident who is going to be the only person, really, directly impacted by this project if it is approved.
Just for the record, could we have your name?
Sure. I apologize. Attorney Carol Ricker.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Board have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just briefly respond, Mr. Chairman. If we are lucky enough to receive approval tonight, we would be very happy to make a condition regarding that six-foot privacy fence along the borderline, the property line. We also did suggest that we would work with the abutter relative to our landscaping plan. And I just asked Mr. Menard, because I heard that last comment about that concern about looking down on the roofs. We would be willing to put an arborvitae line on the abutter's property. We would agree to put that in place at our expense. We're not going to guarantee their longevity, but we would certainly buy them and install them if that could be something that could obviate that view shed concern. The problem, as Mr. Pimentel and Mr. Morrow said, we really looked at how we could move these buildings around. It doesn't work. For fire code, you need the separation. And ergonomically, we just, we pushed our engineer. We don't see a way to change this. And because of the elevation, we really don't think that it's going to, it would have an impact anyways. So the most we believe that we can do to be a good neighbor is a screening fence, is the landscaping plan that we put forth, and an agreement to put another arborvitae line on the abutter's property at his direction. We just simply don't want to get into a situation of guaranteeing the plant's longevity because we won't be in control of them. So with that, I have nothing further.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Morica?
We knew that Ms. Ricker was on, but we want to give everyone else an opportunity.
Okay.
Virtually. So if anyone on Zoom would like to speak to this matter, please click the raise hand icon in the bottom middle of your screen. We have no one, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a question about, and I'm going to ask, as far as what the fire department has said, because there was a question about if there were a fire and what would happen to the abutter. I don't know if that was something that they looked at, as far as the fire department looked at. Being that the unit's so close to the?
The fire department didn't, didn't look at, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say they didn't look at it. They didn't bring that up as a concern. Personally, I've looked into it, and fire code separation is met between the two buildings.
Is there a requirement for sprinklers in units like that? Do we know?
I don't know. That would be Larry the Building Official's question.
I want to be careful with concrete on it, but I think if you're over three, I think you're in sprinkler territory.
I, why is this so loud tonight? I'm already loud. I think so, too, but obviously, whatever the fire code requires and building code requires, has to be met. You know, that's not necessarily under your purview, but they have to meet other codes.
Certainly. It just came to mind when you're dealing with properties like this, buildings of this nature, that there might be a requirement. I didn't know for sure whether it was. That's why I asked.
Mr. Kuti, if it would make you feel more comfortable, we would agree to have a condition, even though it might be superfluous, that will comply with all building code and fire code requirements? I'm just suggesting, obviously.
Yeah. You've got no choice. Board have any questions or comments at this point?
Mr. Chair?
No, Mr. Costa.
During this evening, there's been a lot of testimony in this situation here. During this evening, there's been a lot of testimony in this situation here. And I'm not feeling very comfortable because there are so many, well, we're going to add this later, and this is going to be done later. I just feel as though I'd like to see a completed packet. And if I'm wrong, I do apologize to the board. But TRC found some things that they needed addressed, and I think they were addressed, I believe, at least early. And I don't know, Mr. Morica, how do you feel about as far as a complete packet of all these different changes that have been done? That's kind of like the road I'm traveling down right now.
We're looking right now to see when this was certified complete. I mean, you are granted, you were given a 30-day continuance last month. So I believe, I know you have the July meeting, but we want to get an exact date for you, when you have to make a decision.
Okay. That was one of my questions.
Of course, the applicant is always able to volunteer an extension of the time within which you have to make a decision. So...
Mr. Kudzu, I just would like to, you had mentioned that there's items that are missing, and I don't know what those are. There was a certificate of completeness. We've worked with staff. Nothing's been identified to us that's missing. I think the only things that would be up in the air is what we agreed to tonight to obviate the concerns of the abutter, which was a fence and an additional arborvitae line on the abutter's property. You have the landscaping plans. You have a full set of civil. I believe we've provided everything that Mr. Morica requested. If we didn't, we wouldn't have a certificate of completeness. So that's one issue. If there's a need for a continuance, I'll certainly talk to my client about it, but I don't know what you, what you need, because we believe we've presented everything.
Mr. Scow.
I think we need some type of approval from the abutter. That arborvitae offer is going to be approachable for him and approved.
I have no way.
I mean, we don't know that.
I've exhausted, I had many conversations with Ms. Ricker. We've presented what we can do. I'm not sure that there's anything else that we can do. I made many phone calls. We had several discussions. The memo still got completed. So I don't think the time is going to fix that issue. Unfortunately, the abutter hasn't proposed anything that we might do to obviate their concerns.
You've already proposed the arborvitae issue?
We, I proposed the arborvitae tonight as an exception, because I, we have our landscaping plan on our property. We would agree to install that six-foot fence. I just added that arborvitae because I heard the last comment was a concern about looking down on the roofs. And I thought about a variety of tree that I know that is robust, grows fast, and gets high enough to probably handle that view shed. But again, nothing is, it's basically been presented as we oppose the project. It's not, we'd like to see this, we'd like to see this condition. We came up with the potential resolutions. We've presented them. I don't see it, unfortunately, unless something's suggested to us. We've worked with our professionals. We've put the best development that we believe we can forward.
Yeah. My issue is the abutter. I mean, I'm waiting to see if the abutter is going to agree to what you're proposing.
Well, I understand, but respectfully...
Mr. Chairman, so just, if I may. So if you want to approve this project, you can include conditions of approval, one of which could be a fence of so many feet in height, opaque or vinyl or whatever you determine. And then you could also add a condition that I would say deer-tolerant arborvitae's shall be planted three feet on center for the length of, and again, you're going to have to help with this, but for the length of the property line, if the abutter wants it. You can do that. I don't think you can, you can expect an abutter to respond to what you're asking. But you can make a condition that if the abutter wants those things, then those would have to be provided by the applicant. Does that make sense? I mean, you can't require the abutter to come here and either deny or approve landscaping.
I understand that.
Is Ms. Ricker still on? Okay. I mean, if she wants to weigh in on this, that's fine. But again, she doesn't have to make any commitment. And I'm not even saying whether you have to approve the project or not. I'm saying if you want to approve the project, then you can include conditions that will address what he's talking about, if that makes sense. And again, because Ms. Ricker is not in the room, I would like to give her, you know, the opportunity to respond.
I'm going to promote Carol to panelist.
I'm sorry, I may have missed a question.
So Attorney Ricker, I'm the solicitor for the board. So the conversation has been about if the planning board decides to approve this application, the applicant has made a couple of suggestions or, you know, accommodations for your client, one of which is, I think, a six-foot fence. You know, you could even talk about the materials, as well as arborvitae's that would be planted so many feet across your client's backyard. And if your client wanted to accept those, the applicant would be required to provide those things. I said to the, to the planning board that I'm not saying whether they should approve or deny, that's up to them. But if they want to approve, rather than, which they can't do, require you to come in or your client to come in and say, this is what I want, this is what they're proposing that may address your client's concerns. And I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond, since you're not in the room.
No, I appreciate that. I actually heard all of that. I didn't know what, while I was being added as a panelist, if I missed a particular question. But no, I do appreciate that suggestion, and I appreciate the willingness of the, of all those involved to try to appease my client in some respect. And I think that that would be a reasonable solution. And to clarify, I did refer, represent to Attorney Resnick that my client wanted to move forward with the objection. I certainly appreciate that the work he did to try to alleviate my client's issues. But ultimately, the only thing that's going to alleviate my client's issues is if there's a 25-foot setback from his property. So in that regard, obviously, it was important that my client's objection be put somewhere in the, in the paper record and in the record here. So in terms of the particular issue that you're suggesting, I think that that would be a good resolution of this issue. And I can take that to my client and discuss it with him. And so I would agree that if that is a way to, to put those conditions in there, if the board is going to approve this project, then I think that that would be something that my client could sink his teeth into to some, you know, to some extent. Putting aside the fact that what he would really like to have happen, obviously, is that the project be built in a manner that respects the setbacks that afford him privacy and the like. So that would be my position on that.
So what I'm hearing is that your client objects to the, to the, continues to object to the application, but will consider these, these offers of privacy, you know, buffering, I'll call it.
Certainly. I don't know that my, you know, in the world of, I don't know that my client's objection to the project would carry the day regardless. You know, this is, it's a neighborhood issue that the town has to deal with, the planning board has to deal with. So if the board is going to approve the project over my client's objection, certainly we would ask that those conditions be included.
Mr. McDonald?
Earlier, I asked to speak. This particular application, it's, this is descriptive and not critical. The reason why it needs the relief that it does is because it's been worked to be, to provide for the applicant maximum income, which is, that's the way, that's the way capitalism works. But with all of those, with all the relief, it's, to put it tactfully, it's, it's an awkward application. I, I want to just, I didn't know where to insert this, but I decided before the meeting with the first issue of density units, to bring it up during that particular application, which is this one. I've reduced this to writing. This is an overall view of, I think, the horizon we're seeing now. As a result of new land development regulations and state law, we're seeing a significant number of applications in which domestic housing units are being maximized in number through the use of, the awarding of density units. On this evening's agenda, six of the nine development applications involved density units, before two of them, numbers 11 and 12 were withdrawn this afternoon. It's almost as if a horse race has started.
Mr. Chairman, I would just caution board members to stick to each application individually and listen to the facts of each case individually before making comments on multiple applications that you haven't heard yet.
When is it appropriate to make such a comment? At the end of the hearing?
I mean, you can make comments on this application.
My remarks are instructive for the board, and they've got to do with all of these applications that, the issue is density units.
I understand that. But, but you cannot, you cannot comment on other applications that are not before you at this moment.
And when you say before us at this moment, does that include the items that are on the agenda to be heard or not?
It includes the, it includes anything that is not being heard at this moment, which is the Manville Hill Road application. I mean, you can comment on density, absolutely, as to this application. But I don't want you to be, you know, again, protecting the board and your decisions that you're going to make tonight. I don't want you to go, you know, start making comments about other applications.
Well, I just, if you don't mind, Mr. McDonald, I don't disagree with any of your concerns.
I'm sorry?
I don't disagree with any of your concerns. I didn't understand why the state legislature, in their infinite wisdom, took away the master plan. People want to work with boards and commissions. Fifty to 75% of my consulting now is affordable housing. We come before boards and commissions. We've done some preliminary review. We think we know what we could design. You really don't know until you get to the engineering. But you're really playing with character at that point in numbers. How much housing, how much affordable housing, what's the need of the community. At the master plan stage, you can work with a board and commission. Alternatively, the board and commission has a comfort area. They can say, I don't agree with that density. We will approve X density. You don't like it, go appeal it. Right? Then it's up to the developer whether they can design and engineer and make economically feasible to reduce density. The problem we are now is we have to spend all the money to engineer a project and then come back and say, well, we don't really like the conceptual, that's why we always hope at the pre-app stage, we can get some comfort. Because at the pre-app, if you say, we're telling you right now, it's just guidance, we don't like the number, we're telling you, get wink, wink, get the hint, then you know that you're not going to go spend, take that risk. This is the danger zone that we're in. That danger zone is going to be washed away. The master plan has been reintroduced. The state legislature has approved it. It's imminent that the governor's going to sign it into law. That should be a comfort now for all boards and commissions. And I agree.
Let me, let me ask you this, Madam Solicitor. I can't, I don't think I can give to the board the substance of these events, I'm sorry, the substance of my remarks in a private setting. So the only way I can do it is in a public setting. And the remarks that I wish to make encompass all of these applications, the six of them, I believe, that are left, well, four of them that are left, that involve density units. So is it possible at the end of the meeting, but before it's adjourned, that I make these remarks? Because again, the remarks, without getting into it, they've got to do with town finances. They've got to do with the school system.
So, so again, the finances of the town are not within your purview. So you are required to review applications based on a set of required findings. And that's, that's what you are tasked with. If you don't understand what the required findings are, we can go through those. But your, every time you, you review an application, whether it's a comprehensive permit or a conventional, traditional type of development, there are specific required findings that you must make in order to approve the application, none of which has to do with the town's finances or schoolchildren. I hope that helps.
Well, it doesn't help me, because I, I get, I understand your position.
It's not my position. I am giving you legal advice. This is not my personal position.
Let me, let me rephrase that. I understand the town solicitor's position, defending the interests of the town.
And this board.
And the board. Let me, I'm just going to stew on this for a bit. I don't want to hold up the media.
And I'm happy to talk to you separately about your concerns. But I, but I would caution you to address your comments to this application only and to the required findings.
I yield, Mr. Chairman.
This is a tough one. I don't, if we take the vote tonight, I'm not sure how I'll vote. It may be a last-minute decision. I completely understand where the applicant is coming from. I vaguely remember the pre-app meeting that we had a year ago. I remember personally, I can't speak for any of the other members of the board. I do remember being excited about the project, because it is completely impervious surface, and there was going to be landscaping, which would improve that corner of Manville Hill Road. We'd be taking a non-conforming commercial use and putting housing. So I remember myself, just speaking for myself, being very positive about the project. And I imagine, because the applicant went forward and did the engineering and the planning, that we as a board were generally happy with the proposal. I'm glad to hear that the master plan is coming back, because I think you're absolutely right. I don't remember, and again, it was a year ago, I didn't think to go back and look at the minutes from that meeting a year ago. I don't remember being made aware of all of these variances.
Adjustments.
Adjustments. Adjustment slash variances. I don't know if I would have been as positive if I had known, you know, that porches were going to be three feet off the back lot line, and eaves were going to come over and be two or three feet from the lot line. But without a master plan, you know, we never got there. I think the pre-app is just about, hey, I have this concept of taking this plate, this lot that's, you know, somewhat dilapidated and abandoned and, you know, cracked concrete and making it look much better and providing some housing and both, by the way, you get some affordable housing out of it. So I completely am sympathetic to the applicant feeling like, I got a very positive response from you guys and girls, and now you're saying, well, no, maybe not so much. I personally am not as concerned about the density for this particular project. I share Mr. McDonald's concerns about density in general. With this particular project, I don't think the density is so out of line with... is so out of line with the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, it's a couple of percent. You know, I think in the past, and I'm sure in the future, we will see projects where the density is exponentially more than the surrounding area. This project doesn't really fall into that bucket, so I'm not as concerned with the density. I am concerned, as Mr. Zuck said, with kind of a very long list of adjustments that in a normal, outside of this process, in a normal, I'll call it a normal, what things looked like a year or two ago before all these state law changes, I don't think we would have ever said, and I know, I can't speak for the zoning board, obviously, but I can't imagine us sending a recommendation to the zoning board saying, "Yeah, we agree all of these changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan." And I think Mr. Zuck mentioned this, and if I'm misstating it, please correct me, Mr. Zuck, but we can't, as a town, sell our soul for affordable housing. I understand we need affordable housing. I understand that as a town, we have agreed that we want to get to a 10% level, but there has to be limits. And, you know, we're all going through this process together. You know, the state law has changed and changed and changed. This is now the third legislative session, apparently, where there have been significant changes to the housing laws that nobody really understands, and it's a lot of trial and error and fixing things as we go. So we, as a town, as a board, have not kind of developed what are the standards we should be using? When does it make sense to, you know, provide these density bonuses and these adjustments in order to get a certain level of affordable housing? So all of that said, I don't know how I would vote tonight, if we're going to vote tonight. To Mr. Scound's point, I'm just not sure that, whether the abutter is happy with abrevites or not is what's going to sink or swim this application. I think there's just deeper concerns around the zoning adjustments that I sense at least the three of us perhaps have more concerns about as opposed to whether the abutter, you know, is going to be looking at roofs or abrevites. Would I certainly take the abutter's concerns into consideration, but I don't know that that's the make or break for this particular application. If, throwing it out there, again, I don't know how everyone else on the board feels. You know, if the applicant was willing to give us another month, maybe there's more that can be done to see if things can get finagled. Maybe some of these adjustments can be modified a little bit. Maybe the abutter can be assuaged on some of their concerns, but that's just where I'm at.
May I briefly respond to Mr. Butler? I get confused. Mr. Chairman, may I address Mr. Butler?
Yes, you may.
I just want to make clear that I just confirmed with the engineer that we do not need an adjustment for height. The building is 35. So I just want to put out there, it was sort of an abundance of caution, but I've confirmed that we do not, in fact, need that. I would also suggest, Mr. Butler, that if you believe that it would assist the planning board in a continuance in allowing us to continue another month trying to work with the abutter, we would certainly be willing to do that and we would certainly be willing to take a look at the adjustments. The one that I can say right now we really don't need is the height. So I understand your points and that's our position.
Well, thank you, Mr. Butler, because you couldn't have said it. My sentiments were exactly as you expressed yours. But as far as the adjustments, I'm looking at so many of them. I think that some of them are fixed. That is, correct me if I'm wrong, but, well, you've got that existing building, right? That you're going to convert.
So is there any restriction there or is it because that's so close to the street?
So technically speaking, we know that all of the existing deficiencies, both those that result from our actions and those that are pre-existing. And also because a building is commercially used and it converts to residential, sometimes that triggers different setback requirements. Obviously, we can't cure those, right? The building is in really fine condition. It's a known presence. We just thought that would be very appropriate to reuse that. Plus, it helps on the cost. Because if you had to build new, there goes the cost of the project. So, but yeah, I mean, we can't cure all those setbacks.
That's what I mean. Because I'm not in any kind of disagreement with that existing building because it is what it is. And it certainly makes sense to convert that to, you know, a couple of units, you know, dwelling units, rather than raise it and then put a smaller building there or something. I'm not even suggesting that. So I'm just looking at all of these adjustments here. Is there any one of these, and this and I'll ask the board, are there some that you? Are there some adjustments that you're comfortable with and others that you're not?
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may offer through you, the chairman?
Yeah.
We're starting, we're listening to the board and we listen to the neighbor and we've conferred with our client. We understand privacy issues too and the setback issues. We're going to get rid of those decks in the back. We're going to eliminate them. That's already given, give another four to five, six feet, already a separation on top of whatever we figure we can do. But we can offer that upfront already.
So we've diminished the relief needed for the setback based off of that, and we've eliminated the adjustment for the height.
Oh, now we're moving.
Setback makes sense.
Yes. Mr. Zuck?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, for the record, I'd like to say I like the fact that you're incorporating the pre-existing building into the plan. So certainly those adjustments regarding that building, being so close to the lot lines, those don't bother me. I pause when I look at the adjustments requested for, it seems like every other, the setbacks on every other lot line, which results completely from the plan that was chosen and not any pre-existing buildings.
Well, so we're working with a particular site and with that site, there's already an improvement on it. So we obviously wanted to obviate traffic onto the main thoroughfare and orient it with the other development. Because of where the existing building is positioned and then where you place the buildings, because you have to have the proper travel and aisle width, we couldn't push buildings forward more to try to get greater setback. One thing led to another because this is not an unimproved property or site. If this was a blank slate, we probably could have had a much better proposal with fewer adjustments. But we have to work with that building and its positioning, and that led to other things.
Hey, you're pretty much constrained because of the center of the development as far as getting vehicles in and out of there and so on and so forth. I can appreciate that because that's exactly what I'm looking at.
Correct.
As far as, have there any adjustments to make to the buildings? And I understand and I can appreciate, yeah, again, you've got a tough thing to work with here, that you can't move the buildings too much. If I'm looking at it, you'd be fighting yourself trying to get the turning movements and parking and so on.
If you moved the building that's situated directly behind the existing pub, even if you moved it just three feet, which is the bare minimum, you only end up with a 12. Yeah, you got the one-way travel, but now you also then think, "The fire department needs access around these buildings." As we were designing this over the last year, right, and going back and forth, back and forth, trying to minimize adjustments, trying to make this an economically feasible project, much like we discussed at the pre-app stage, it just, sorry, one thing led to another. We would cure one thing, you lead to another. That's not safe design. Like I said before, it's a unique site and to the board's concerns about density, that's why I say each property does stand on its own merits because each property is unique.
Thank you. Are there any other adjustments that you're looking at that you think that are concerning to you? I'm asking everyone on the board.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Zuck?
I know we've talked about density a lot. And I had stated before that the density of the proposal at, what is it, 18 units per acre is greater than the estimated neighborhood density at 15 units per acre. That's according to the staff report. I acknowledge that's not a huge difference. When I went up and down those streets looking at this property, even the apartment complex further west, south, down Manville Hill Road, it felt less dense than I think it really was because it's nicely hidden behind a huge row of trees. Some of the, yeah, it just, it just feels like when I look at this plan, it's a lot greater density than the surrounding area. That's what, that's, I mean, it's 18 versus 15, so by fact, it is denser. It just feels like the difference between that 18 and 15 is more, if you know what I mean.
It's kind of quiet to my left here.
If I might. I think everything that I'm thinking has already been said and I hate to repeat myself about density and traffic. And as you all know, density is always an issue with me. So I'm not going to say or repeat myself. Everybody, everything has been said, so I have to think about it. And that's where I'm standing.
Okay.
I'll chime in since you asked. But I actually don't have any objection really to this project. I think that it's going to be a lot better condition than what the site is currently. I think the fact that we're eliminating all of that impervious surface is going to be a great beneficial, great benefit to the environmental conditions there. I appreciate the setback from Manville Road and how that's going to be greened up. There's going to be a line of trees there. I, you know, I understand the neighbor's concern, but I think that they have shown a willingness to work with them. And I do think that the solutions that they've offered, plus the existing topography of the site, really does kind of alleviate some of that view that the neighbor is concerned about. So, I mean, I know that there's a lot of adjustments here, but I think once you take into consideration that they're willing to work with those and some of those are attributable to an existing building, I think at the end of the day, the improvements outweigh the adjustments that are needed here.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick, I believe you were talking about the decks, that you were going to remove those?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, pleasure of the board.
Oh, sure. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to take credit for this. It was on the back of my mind. I want to give the engineer the credit. We're also dealing with the unique characters of the property. We have three lot frontages in one rear. We don't even have a side because it's a paper street. If this was a true corn lot, that back would actually have been severely reduced and we'd be compliant. So it's dealing with three frontages in a rear. Once again, I just want to put on the record what we had to deal with and why the adjustments seem more excessive, but it's because of the uniqueness of the property and what it's surrounded by. Just wanted to get that on the record.
Well, first of all, before we go any further, the solicitor had mentioned, and we heard testimony from the abutter's attorney relative to the screening. And I'm comfortable with that proposal, okay? If the board wants to go forward, we're including that in the motion.
So let's be clear. We're talking about the setbacks being approved.
As they are. Well, we're kind of stuck with that.
That's an issue.
If it works into the timeline and the applicant is amenable, I mean, I would just like to suggest if we could continue this to the July meeting, it would allow us to at least get a clean staff report that indicates that the adjustments for the porches aren't needed and any other minor adjustments that are falling off. It would provide at least another couple of weeks for the applicant and the abutter to get together before we kind of make these conditions about fences and abrevites. You know, if there's at least some agreement or some thinking or something so that we're not making a requirement that may not be fulfilled or may not be taken advantage of, just...
I'd just say the, so this application was certified complete on May 12. So 90 days from then is August 10.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, because you don't know what's going to happen in a month, I would ask for another 30-day extension. Mr. Resnick, I just talked to him. I think it would be helpful for him to revise the plans. And I would even put on the plans the fence. The fence, definitely. And then the abrevites, like, make a note that it's an option of the abutter so that it's on the plan that they're proposing to you and you can see, you know, the distance between the abrevites because they got to fill in and all that stuff. Removal of the decks and whatever else that you've agreed with.
That's what I was referring to at the very beginning, all these adjustments. I like to see it, black and white.
Understood.
Mr. Butler, you convinced me that it makes more sense to give us a little chance to catch our breath and get everything ironed out by...
I think it would just make everything cleaner.
Yes, I agree with you.
And just before you, just before you make a motion, I just want Mr. Resnick to agree on the record that the time to make a decision is extended by an additional 90 days, which would be early September.
No objection, agreed. And we will revise the plan set based off of some of the adjustments that we've talked about this evening and the plans and the fence, et cetera, so you get a clean copy and we can see it, absolutely.
Thank you.
And we would just ask that it would be continued to date certain the next meeting, of course.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue this application until the next regularly scheduled meeting in July.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Butler, second by Mr. Scound. Any other discussion? Hearing not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we get to the next application, I know we're coming up on the reporters' two-hour limit for a break. I'm wondering if now's a good time for a break.
So moved. We'll take a break. We'll take a break.
Probably made everybody good.
Good to go, good to go, okay. I'll reconvene the meeting at eight thirty-three P. M. Next item of business is public hearing for preliminary minor subdivision unified development plan review, special use permit, Shaken Acres applicant Stephen Miller Esquire, commissioner for Albert A. Shaken, or Shakan Jr., Laurie A. Shakan, and Deborah A. Mitchell. Shaken, Shaken?
Yes.
Shaken, Shakan, Shaken, okay, okay. Owners Albert A. Shaken Jr., Laurie A. Shaken, and Deborah A. Mitchell. Location twenty-nine forty-five Mendon Road, assessors plat thirty-seven lot eight-five-two. Zoning is R-one with public water and sewer, and R-one with no public water and public sewer. The applicant proposes to subdivide a pre-existing non-conforming lot with three single-family residences into three lots, each with one single-family residence. The project requires a special use permit to create non-conforming lots, allowing each house on its own lot. The applicant requests a waiver from lot proportion invariances from front yard setback and road frontage. Mr. Mordecai?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know, Mr. Chair, did you want to mention the ten P. M. thing?
Yes, before we continue, we have a curfew where we will not take any more items beyond ten o'clock.
Thank you. So the board first heard this project in April of two thousand and twenty-three when you approved the master plan to subdivide the property into three parcels. At that time, the driveway was proposed to be a public road, so there were some complications involved in that. To improve the road to town standards, the applicants would have needed a D. E. M. permit, and they needed to, would need to have significantly correct the grade of that driveway near Mendon Road. So all these issues effectively put the project on hold. Earlier this year, the town council approved the zoning ordinance that would allow the subdivision of lots with multiple dwellings on them by special use permit, and the board heard and approved a similar project a few months ago. And as we've seen, the goal of the special use permit with the multiple houses on the lot is to create a greater conformity of one house per lot, which leads to some consequences that can create other non-conformities as a result. Here, the applicants do need some relief. I think that the relief they're requesting is reasonable and unavoidable, I think. They have a pre-existing nineteen-foot setback for the building on parcel A on Honeywell Lane that needs a six-foot variance. The property already has deficient road frontage on Mendon Road as it relates to parcels B and C, so that is also a pre-existing condition, and each of those new parcels need about eighty feet of relief. And then we have the lot shape, the shape factor. Creating parcel B exceeds the shape factor of forty, which the board just voted on last month. Its shape factor number is forty-four. And the reason for that, the reason it exceeds that number, is because parcel A had to be carved out of this larger parcel, and parcel B needs to get down the long driveway to Mendon Road, so it creates this flag lot in order to put the house on its own lot. So we find that these variances, the variances that are requested are reasonable and necessary to subdivide the lots, and that the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we are recommending approval of the preliminary plan, provided that the applicant provides an access easement for parcels, the owners of parcels B and C, to repass, pass and repass over each other's property.
Board have any questions for Mr. Mordecai?
Thank you.
We'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Johnson. I'm attorney in Warwick, Rhode Island. I represent the applicant. Mr. Mordecai stole a lot of my thunder as far as what we're seeking here this evening, but just to reiterate, we are seeking a minor subdivision, which would take the three homes which have existed there since the nineteen-sixties and put them on individual lots. Currently, there are three homes built by the current owner's parents. Two of these current owners reside there. The third doesn't reside there, but the former owner's sister lives there, so that would be the current owner's aunt, who sadly lives at sixteen Honeywell Avenue. The properties are co-owned, so what that means is that the siblings who reside there only own really, frankly, a third of their home. There's other siblings, only other two-thirds of their home. What we're seeking to do is to codify what would, what a reasonable person, reasonable person would think if they drove down Shaken Acres, if they drove down Honeywell Road. When you come down that road, to the right and to the left are two homes that look like they have their curtilage, their yard, they're maintained by their respective owners. Those would be parcels B and C. Similarly, on Honeywell Avenue, when if you come down Honeywell Avenue, number sixteen sits there, has its curtilage and its surrounding yards, which is owned and maintained by Deborah Mitchell, the owner of sixteen, or the person who maintains sixteen Honeywell Avenue, who will ultimately own that, subject to this board's approval. We are importantly not seeking any alterations to the site, so the status quo more or less is being maintained. As, as Mr. Mordecai indicated, creating a public road to service these three homes, which would have met the literal requirements of the subdivision and zoning ordinances, was a pretty large hardship. It was potentially not feasible based upon how much impervious surface had to be added in vicinity, in proximity of the wetlands which exist on the site. Moreover, it would have required a street creation, so the town of Cumberland would have been responsible for a portion of that road and cul-de-sac without picking up any new, any new residences, without picking up any new homes or tax base. I could get into each of the required variances we're seeking, which are, as were laid out with the setback on Honeywell, as well as the frontage reduction, the frontage variances for parcels B and C, where their private driveway meets Mendon Road. Again, those are conditions which have existed from the nineteen-sixties or prior, and we really can't do anything to ameliorate those issues. And again, as you had mentioned, the lot shape standard, we want a, how, we think it's more important that a house or a lot has permanent physical access to a main road, being Mendon Road, than, than that the variance of the factor of three, I believe it was a factor of forty is required, and it was a forty-three factor with the, I can't, I'm not sure how to do the math on that, I went to law school for a reason, but it was a reasonably small difference, it appeared to me. So, and just really in quoting the staff report, which was exhaustive and went into each detail on this, I mean, the minor subdivision is being undertaken to take one legally non-conforming parcel and to turn it into three more conforming parcels. So it's what you would think is there if you were just driving by down the road, how it, how it should look, how it ought to look. So that's what we're seeking. I can get into, certainly into any specifics, as well as any criteria that the board may have, and I'm certainly happy here to, here to answer any questions.
Board have any questions?
Any questions? This easement that was mentioned earlier, that has nothing to do with like a shared driveway, does it?
So that is a cross, it is, so Shaken Way is a private driveway, it's shared between parcels B and C currently. So that would be, it would be two easements, or we might call it cross easement, where parcel B will grant, they each own half of that driveway, so they'll each have twenty, it's about a forty-foot wide driveway, they'll each own twenty feet of that, it's a, it looks like a small private road, if you go down it, it's forty feet wide. The proposed boundary line will run right down the middle of that, so each home will own twenty feet of that improved private road that's currently existing, so that it can be used the way it's always been used through the last however many years, it's a two-way, two-way road. If this property ever sells, there'll be a cross easement where the, the portion that parcel B owns, they'll grant an easement to parcel C and vice versa, so that both parcels B and C can both use the full driveway, so it's a two-way driveway versus two narrow one-way driveways.
That's in the event that one of them should decide to sell, am I correct?
So that would be part of the final plan, that, that would be granted as part of the final plan, the easement would be recorded. I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood the question.
Oh, no, I'm just saying if one of the owners decided to sell, so how would that work as far as a bill of sale, because you only own, wouldn't you say twenty percent?
Uh, no, twenty feet, so that would be fifty percent, it'd be half, so it's half and half. It's a forty-foot road, each owns twenty. The easement means that in perpetuity, both property owners would be able to use the entire width versus having, you know, you've got one common roadway, it looks like a roadway, it's forty, it's about forty feet wide, versus, versus having a, you know, one neighbor can use this half, and the other neighbor can use that half, and never the two shall meet, there's a permanent easement so that it maintains as a permanent road, and the cost of that maintenance is shared, will be shared in that easement between parcel B and C as it is now, as it, as it always has been.
Yeah, but it's family now, so in the event that it didn't, wasn't a family member?
Right.
Just curious.
Right, right.
Should put in the cot for the horse, never mind.
No, makes sense, makes perfect sense, because that, you know, you're always thinking ahead, what happens when or if?
Right.
You know, the ownership changes. But that, you answered my question as far as the shared cost of the maintenance, snow problem, removal and all that, would be shared by those.
Right, exactly.
Two properties.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
So I think there's three motions. So the first one in regards to twenty-nine forty-five Mendon Road.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, is this a hearing?
I'm sorry.
It's not, hold on, let me see. Yes, correct. So before we get, before we go forward, yes, it is, so in that case, if there's anyone here in the audience or in the queue that have any questions or comments at this point, please come forward either to the podium or raise your hand through the device if you would like to be heard.
So anyone on Zoom, if you want to speak to this matter, you can click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. So there's no one, thank you.
Okay, then I will close the hearing at eight forty-five P. M., and thank you for reminding me. Now I'll ask.
Mr. Chairman, first motion is in regards to twenty-nine forty-five Mendon Road, that we approve the special use permit to subdivide a lot with more than one structure, as granting the special use permit meets the stated criteria as outlined in the staff memo dated June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Costa. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, second motion in regards to twenty-nine forty-five Mendon Road, move that we approve the zoning variance for dimensional relief on proposed lots A, B, and C, based on the required findings in the staff memo dated June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Scound, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, last motion in regards to twenty-nine forty-five Mendon Road, a move that we approve the preliminary plan, including the waiver from the land development and subdivision regulations for parcel B, with the condition that easements shall be recorded that provide access to the driveway for proposed parcel B to cross parcel C, and proposed parcel C to cross parcel B, as the preliminary plan is consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan, based on the findings of fact in the staff memo dated June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
A motion by Mr. Butler, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Reese. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item of business is item number eight, preliminary plan, major land development, comprehensive permit, project name, Noshan Mill. Owner applicant, Landing Cumberland, Landing Cumberland LLC, location thirty-two Meeting Street, assessors plat two, lots seventeen, one sixty-two, one sixty-three, one sixty-five, one sixty-six, one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight, one seventy-seven, and one seventy-eight. Zoning is C-two with public water and public sewer. The applicant proposes to rehabilitate the mill into one hundred and eight residential units, of which thirty-five percent will be affordable. The applicant requests adjustments for residential density, landscape buffer, non-commercial use in a mixed-use zone C-two, parking space setback, block coverage, and parking aisle width. This item was continued from the May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five planning board meeting, and this is also a public hearing. Mr. Mordecai?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board heard this, the pre-application phase, last year in March, as well as last month's meeting, where we further discussed the project, its financing, and we touched on traffic and residential density. And the applicant at that last meeting requested a continuance to tonight for potential vote. So over the life of this project, which has been about four years, the numbers of units have fluctuated a little from around one hundred and eight to one hundred and fourteen units, and the affordability percentage has also changed. I recently, a couple weeks ago, discussed the project after our planning board meeting last month, we talked with the applicants, and basically, the gist, the biggest outcome is that they agreed to increase the affordability percentage from twenty-five percent to thirty-five percent. So now there'll be, thirty-eight units will be de-restricted as affordable for ninety-nine years, which will include seventy-three one-bedroom units and thirty-five two-bedroom units. And as we've discussed, there are, there are some issues here to consider with this project as it relates to traffic and residential density, which are obviously intertwined. PAR conducted a traffic study that shows the intersection of Broad Street and Bill Street will get worse even if this project does not get built, and with this project, the traffic situation does sink a little lower. PAR's traffic study was peer-reviewed by BL Companies, and we have Michael Dion here, representative of BL, to answer any questions that you might have regarding traffic. And I know one hundred and eight units sounds like a lot, but this is a big vacant mill building on a dormant three-and-a-half acre site, so whatever is going to happen here is going to generate a lot more cars and traffic than we have right now. Noshan Mill is also a historic building that's been slowly deteriorating for years, so this project can bring new life to the property. One impact this project is unlikely to have is on school enrollment, because the units are relatively small, they're mostly one-bedroom, it's unlikely we're going to see many families moving in. And the applicant does request several adjustments from zoning and the regulations. Most of these adjustments are due to pre-existing conditions with the mill and with the current parking. One aspect that can be enhanced is to include even more landscaping around the east and west perimeter along the parking lots. And then when it comes to evaluating comprehensive plan consistency, that was, it was a difficult decision to make, and I literally argued both sides, and I think both sides are legitimate. The comp plan includes a lot to support this project, but there's also a lot in there that doesn't support it. So you've got to weigh what I had to weigh and what you're going to weigh, or, you know, the neighborhood impacts versus creating more housing, especially affordable housing. So I felt that reviving and adaptively reusing this mill and creating much-needed housing is going to help enliven Valley Falls. It's going to help existing businesses and potentially lead to new business coming down here and contributing to revitalizing this general area. So for these reasons, the planning department finds the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we're recommending approval with the four conditions in your staff report, to merge the lots, secure the property, submit a revised landscape plan, and revise the traffic study to include a warrant for traffic signal at Broad and Mill Street. So I think maybe a good question to ask the traffic engineers, if we put a signal, signalized intersection at Broad and Mill, how is that going to alleviate current traffic? Or what will it do? Will it facilitate traffic? It'll certainly make the intersection safer, but there might be question of flow. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board have any questions for Mr. Mordecai? We'll hear from the applicant, thank you, Mr. Mordecai.
Good evening, Anne Bresley, I'm one of the co-developers on this project. I've been part of this project since day one, so I've met and been in front of you on multiple occasions already, so I do want to be a resource for, to answer questions. But most importantly, I just want to remind everybody where we were and where we're now. So the last meeting that we had, where we presented in front of you, we were given a good guidance on what to do next, and that was to meet with the planning board and see how we make this project, a project that the planning board, or the planning department could get behind, which is what we did. And so we did stretch the project from twenty-five percent affordable to thirty-five percent affordable, which was important for the town to meet some of its affordability requirements. We also just looked at the overall requests from past notes, and a lot of the conditions that Glenn just touched upon meet things that we've heard, the landscaping, the merging of the lots, so we feel very comfortable with all of those conditions and fulfilling those conditions. So at this point, we feel very confident that we're giving the town the project that they requested in a way that can also be successful.
Board have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Zook.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, a couple of concerns that I wanted to ask you about relating to traffic and parking. So regarding traffic, when I'm reviewing the staff report, I'm going to quote from the staff report here, "Concerns were previously raised about increased traffic associated with the addition of one hundred and eight units, potentially bringing one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and fifty new residents. At that time, skepticism was fueled by the imbalance between the affordable housing benefit and the project's impact on the area. However, with the affordability percentage now increased by ten percent, the project offers a stronger public benefit and warrants greater support," end quote. So what I feel like that's saying is that because there's, and I appreciate, there's an increase in the affordable units, that sort of counterbalances the concerns about traffic. In my mind, there's still a question about what those traffic impacts will be, and really, I'm not sure how I feel about that trade-off. In the, the next paragraph, I'll quote again from the staff report, "Notably, traffic experts from both Paracorporation and BL Companies agree that traffic in the area is projected to worsen regardless of whether the project proceeds. Therefore, there will be no significant negative impacts on the health and safety of current or future residents of the community that would arise specifically due to the project being approved," end quote. To me, that's saying that traffic is going to get worse anyway, so we can't really blame the worsening traffic on this project, which I understand the rationale behind that, but I also feel like that's kind of, we can't just bury our heads in the sand regarding worsening traffic. So again, that's kind of a, it doesn't make me feel good. And jumping to the parking, one hundred and eight units, one hundred and thirteen parking spaces, is that right?
Yes.
So seventy-three one-bedrooms, thirty-five two-bedrooms, God forbid if some of those two bedrooms have two cars. I, and I know the, the requirements are only for one spot per unit, but it still makes me feel uneasy, the idea of only one hundred and thirteen parking spaces if we have one hundred and eight units. So those are the two concerns I have that I'm throwing at you, that, yeah, I'm going to ask you to kind of allay my fears.
Okay, so let me address the parking, because that's probably the easier of the two. There's additional space for more parking, and it's kind of a phase two if we were to need it. So we've talked about it, but it would require some wetland and D. E. M. work, so we're doing it more as a phase two, but we do have that additional land if required. In addition, we've had a good relationship with Cadillac Mills, which has obviously a significant amount of parking that they use during the day, but not in the evening and the times that a family's or residents would come back. So they've been really just very positive towards the project, so we've talked to them too, but at this point, we didn't even engage because we felt we had enough, even for the circumstance that you're talking about, which is people get car crazy. And then last, lastly, we really are going to try to market, we're not going to put any restrictions, but we are going to try to market to the Cumberland retiring community. And so as you can expect, retirees don't tend to utilize cars as much, or sometimes don't even have cars, but we aren't putting a restriction on the project, but it's something that we would like to do just because it makes a ton of sense. You know, that's what we see, is a lot of local people wanting to stay in their communities, but they can't because now they have this house, and then they have to find a different home. So that's, that's the parking, we've, we've definitely thought that through, we were pretty conscious of just even the marketability, right? You know, of, of the units based on the parking. So we feel like that is an area of concern, and we understand it, but we went through that whole path ourselves as well, and feel very confident in that.
Do you mind, I'm sorry to interrupt, do you mind if I ask you a couple of follow-up questions about the parking?
Yeah, sure.
Because I feel like you're going to go on to traffic.
Sure, 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 sure.
Yeah. Phase two?
Yeah.
And the Cadillac Mills, any idea how many parking spots those solutions would provide?
I mean, we were looking at at least twenty more, and that was, I don't even think that involved Cadillac Mills, but I would have to double-check, but it's, it became the solution, we had an, a We had an abundance, so we just stopped looking at the numbers of parking spaces.
An abundance of parking, I like that.
An abundance of parking, yeah.
And as far as marketing to retirees, are there a lot of walkable, sort of stores, amenities within walking distance to the property?
Yes, right, I mean, we're right on Broad Street, right? And then on top of that, you have the other side of Central Falls, so that development project, so actually, yes.
Excellent. All right, continue your response, thank you.
So traffic, it's definitely, you know, the 15-pound gorilla that we've been dealing with, and, you know, every report is going to come out and essentially say, hey, listen, traffic's gonna increase no matter what, because that's the reality of almost every city in town that we've ever done a traffic report in. So, you know, the reality is, it is going to increase traffic. I think the most important element of it is that it's not going to, you know, exponentially envy an enormous impact. And I think one of the signs that this is really more important for community members to have the building, you know, kind of renovated and refurbished versus the traffic, is we haven't had community members or butters or anybody within that area with, we did three streets of invitations, and nobody came out in opposing it, only positive feedback. And they, and they're the ones who are going to be impacted the most direct, right? And then on top of that, we are talking about Broad Street, which is a hectic area, and so it's, if anything, I think you're gonna see that, you know, improvements are probably gonna be put in place by the town over time on how to solve the overall traffic that exists. We can have BL, we can have Par come up and talk to you about the traffic studies, but the conclusions are exactly what are in the report, and it's the fair side of it, which is just being fair and saying, yes, it's gonna increase traffic. But when you're looking at a butters, that's not as important to them as seeing this, this building be renovated and utilized in a positive way, and that seems to be the consensus that we're getting. So I can't solve the traffic, unfortunately. And it's, it is, it's the area that I wish I could solve by doing something easy, and I can't. Yeah, sorry.
Ms. Reese?
All right, so I'm gonna talk about traffic, and it doesn't matter what we put in this area, if it's 5, 10, 50, it's still going to increase traffic. The traffic on Broad Street is, been generated and increased by the schools, and by the schools, and over by the schools. So I live in Valley Falls, so if anybody is going to be impacted by traffic, it's me, and it's gonna be a lot of it. But I'd rather see a building and housing in that area than what I'm seeing now. And I think you don't have many butters there, you only have a few. You have a club with 500 members that are probably not even, they don't care about this building, but they do care about the looks of that street, that, and I'll bet it's been looking for many years. That I think we care about. And the traffic, yeah, we have to deal with more traffic. I don't think a light on Mill Street, you're right, is going to fix anything at all. What is it gonna do? Stop your traffic? It, it's probably gonna back up traffic with so many lights, so, or traffic lights. But I think I said it at the last meeting, it's something that is going to be difficult to deal with. You have elderly population in the valley, it's mostly older people, and dealing with this traffic with the schools, we know we can't get out of the house between 8:00 and 9:30, and we cannot travel on Broad Street between 3:00 or 2:30 and 3:30. That's a given for anyone. So, but I still would like to see this project going forward, just because of the looks of that area.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you have any experts at all?
We do, I mean, we've had them speak before, so I didn't wanna put through that whole show again unless there were specific questions or something that you wanted to discuss in more detail.
I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads. Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Zuck wasn't here, so maybe there's some other questions you might have related to this project. I mean, we've, right, we've heard it several times, but he hasn't, so I don't know if there's something that...
Thank you.
You feel as though that he should, since he's a new member to the board?
I appreciate that, thank you. I did, I looked over the material, and the, yeah, the only concerns I had were the parking and the traffic, and Mrs. Reese, I appreciate the exchange that I just heard, and that does help to allay my, my concerns.
Yeah. Well, I'm pleased that, you know, you've worked with the town, and we've increased the number of affordable units, that's a plus for us, and that's kind of the way we were looking, moving, so I thank you for working with the town staff, trying to work with getting a workable plan.
Yeah, thank you, thank them too for working with us, for sure. This has been a long journey for all of us over here.
Yeah, with that being said, I will open up the floor for any questions or comments, and also if there's anyone in the queue that is interested in commenting also, please come forward to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, and if you're online, just press the hand button. Going, going. Okay? Anything? Okay, going, I'll close the, the public hearing at, oh, let's say 9:07 PM. Mr. Comments to the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure how long I've been on this board, several years. This has been the hardest project for me. I have given more thought to this project than any other project that I have had to, to vote on. I really have given an enormous amount of consideration to this. And, you know, when the applicant came to us a year ago, I think, or a little more than a year ago at the library for the pre-app, I expressed at that time that I saw a lot of positives with this project. I won't go through all of them again, but the main one for me is, you know, my grandfather worked for over 50 years at Cadillac Mills, loved that building, loved this area. When they moved from Central Falls to Cumberland, it was like they won the lottery. They got married at St. Patrick's Church. It's why I'm so excited about St. Patrick's Church getting reused. I wanna see these factory buildings redone and saved, because I've seen what's happened in Pawtucket with mills that are just left vacant for long periods of time. They burn down, they fall down, and then you end up with stop and shops and shopping centers and things that are even less conducive to the neighborhood. I also said a year ago that there were things that I had real concerns about, and I do appreciate how far the applicant has come in trying to address those concerns, and I have gone back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. But for me, you know, my two kids went to the school across the street, my youngest just graduated from that building last week, so I've spent eight years in this neighborhood. Every day, luckily, my kids took the bus, so I didn't have to deal with the traffic that Ms. Reese was talking about with drop off and pick offs, pickups, but, you know, my kids stayed after school in the YMCA program, so every day, five days a week, I came from work in Warwick, came down Mill Street, had to try to get onto Broad Street, get across Broad Street into the school parking lot, take the one-way out of the parking lot, go up to the street over here, and then try to cross over to get back over to High Street. There were many days, I mean, I didn't count them, but there were a lot of days when traffic on Mill Street, I was sitting on the train tracks, waiting to get to Broad Street. There were days, many, many days, when I tried to cross over Broad Street to get over to High Street, and I sat there for two, three, four minutes, and finally just decided, you know what, I'm just gonna take the long way around, and turned on Broad Street and made the big loop. I am sorry to admit, with my kids in the car, that there were times that I just closed my eyes and bolted across Broad Street, nope, somebody, nobody sideswiped me, because the sightlines are so horrible. If there are people parked in front of Bandito's, which I love that they go to Bandito's, it's a great restaurant, but if there's somebody parked right there, you can't see the traffic coming down Broad Street. When you're on Mill Street, you have to pull out into Broad Street to see the traffic coming down. These are the roads that the folks in this complex would be using. So for me, in the densest part of the town, in this just six or eight block part of Cumberland, this is an enormously dense part of town, and the density bonus for this project is just exponentially higher than the density of the most dense neighborhood in the town. That I have a problem with. I understand that the traffic's gonna get worse, whether this project gets built or not. I understand the traffic is gonna get worse, no matter what goes in that mill. If it's, if it's mixed use, if it's commercial, if it's industrial, it's going to create traffic. But I can't deal with what-ifs. I know from the testimony last month from the, from Mr. Chevlin, that this project is projected, and it seems, no, no offense to the traffic engineer who's joining us tonight, but these estimates always seem to be on the low end, but Mr. Chevlin's testimony was 70 cars per hour during the peak travel times in the morning and the afternoon, adding 70 cars per hour to this mess at the times when, you know, as Ms. Reese pointed out, people can't leave their driveways between 8:00 and 9:30 and 2:00 and 3:30. That's when we're adding the traffic to, to this area. I appreciate Mr. Zuck bringing up parking. I appreciate that there may be a phase two, and there may be a plan for additional parking, but that's not what's before us tonight, and I share the concerns that, and as part of my job, I go to a lot of senior housing complexes and apartment buildings, and there's just seas of empty parking spaces. So I'm certainly not suggesting that you should have two, two spots per unit, or two spots per two-bedroom, or anything like that. My biggest concern is when the festival is happening at Lusitania, like it was last weekend, when there is a talent show, a science fair, a parent-teacher night, all the events that I have been to across the street for the last eight years, and people have no place to park, because there is no off-street parking in this neighborhood. You can't fit cars on both sides of any of these side streets, and so where do people park? In town hall lot, in the Lusitania lot? My kids played soccer at the Lusitania field. Where do people park? In the school lot, the town hall lot, in front of people's driveways? When it snows, and with these reduced parking aisles in the parking lots, where do you put the snow? I know the commercial building that I manage is part of the nonprofit that I run, you know, when we have six, eight, 10 inches of snow, we lose 5%, 10%, 15% of our parking for two, three, four, five, six, sometimes more days, because there's only so many places that you can put the snow. You end up having to put it in parking spaces. So for reducing the aisles in these parking lots, and you have to push the snow somewhere, where do people go? They go into the neighborhood, they go into the town hall lot, they go into Lusitania lot. I, as I said, I get the sense that this, you know, project will pass tonight. If it does, I will be an enthusiastic supporter, I wish the applicant nothing but good luck. I'm sure it'll be a beautiful development, I'm sure you'll have no problem, you know, getting people to move into the development. I hope all the concerns I raised turn out to just be, you know, don't, don't come to fruition, that, that everything works out perfectly fine. But like I said, I've given a ton and tons and tons and tons of thought to this, and I, I just, as much as I wanna get to yes, I, unfortunately, I can't. But if the decision to my colleagues tonight is a yes, as I said, I will enthusiastically support the project and hope that it's successful, and, you know, I'm sure it'll be an asset to the town. And I thank, and I truly thank you for, 'cause I know you're taking a financial hit, going from 25% to 35% affordable, and adding on, you know, additional parking, I'm sure it's some kind of a cost, and so I appreciate the efforts you've made to make the project more amenable. It, it just wasn't enough for me to be able to get to yes, but I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butt, excuse me, Mr. Butler, anyone else?
I'll make a comment.
Okay, Mr. Scott.
It's tough to, you know, oppose what Mr. Butler says, but from my perspective, this is a property that you probably are not gonna have too many opportunities to develop. And I think it's gonna take, you know, a number of years to get this completed as well. I would hope in the meantime, one, they get a light at Mill Street, 'cause yes, there's gonna be traffic. On the other hand, I think the school issue, I believe the school is capped at a certain amount of students, so I think the traffic issue there is, will not expand as greatly as it could have if, if the school was gonna grow. I think we've dealt with that issue already. I, I understand the density issue, I've been in the neighborhood, I've been in that area many times, I do live on the other end of the city, town, and I have originally come from Pawtucket and worked in redevelopment there. And it's important that these properties get developed, because they're just gonna be stagnant, they're not gonna do anything for the town, and they're not gonna improve our situation relative to housing, whether it be affordable or not. And I think, you know, we could find ourselves in a situation where something else goes in there that, that's industrial or commercial, that will not be beneficial to the town. So I, I have a tendency to lean towards, you know, this particular project being developed because of the site, and because of the condition of the property and the improvement that it can bring to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. McDonald, would you have, did you have something to contribute?
Just a couple of comments. I, I'm an, I'm an inner-city kid, I grew up in Chelsea, Massachusetts, the poorest of its 351 cities and towns, and we had three family houses, and if you, if you go on these streets today, they're loaded with cars, they're very few driveways. When I was a boy in the 50s, it was never a problem, because many families didn't have cars, no one had two cars, and it is somewhat mirroring, I think, in a sense, what Mr. Butler was saying, and that is, it is a large building, and when that, when those mills were humming, there was never a traffic problem, because people did, a lot of them didn't have cars back then, 100 years ago, they walked. So the, the density is a problem. As far as someone mentioned, schools, when schools closed this year, BF Norton is 83% full, Garvin, Garvin is full, so I don't know how many children would be involved, but it may have an impact on the children. There was one application where, I forget which one it was, Dr. Thornton was here and mentioned, actually, I'm not, wasn't here, it was a TRC meeting, where he said that if an app, if the application were approved, that some children may have to be bused to a school other than whatever school district they were in, because of capacity issues. So I, I, I can't get to yes on this, and I feel badly for the young lady that is trying to do this. It's just like in the Blackstone Valley Prep application. I could've supported that application anywhere but Valley Falls. Thank you.
Can I make some comments to what's been said, or am I not allowed?
Can I make some comments to what's been said, or am I not allowed?
Um. If, if it's something that's gonna help us, sure.
Uh, just really quickly, one important factor is that we aren't asking for any types of variance with the parking, just, that's, we're, we're doing what's legally permitted. So I think that's just important, because I understand the need and, and the thoughts of more parking, but we're within the requirements of this comprehensive permit. And then, as for the children and for the density, again, one of the tasks that was brought up in our last meeting was, everybody knows that we have to make this project viable at the same time as we are trying to accommodate what everybody is asking for, and one of the things that was brought up in our last meeting together, and then also within the meeting that we had with the town planner, was that, in the end, we want this project to go, so we don't want there to be such a tightness to this project that all of a sudden it gets stalled for some reason. So the unit count is based on the size of this building, which is over a hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet. And just utilizing it in a way that also reduces how many students or families might now have to rely on the school system, so that's why we increased the one-bedroom so significantly. We're talking about thirty-six, I think it's thirty-six two-bedroom, and that's it. These are designed for retirees, or individuals, or, you know, a couple, they are, from a floor plan, we did take into account the concern that had been brought up, which is, what, what is this gonna do to our schools? And it's very, very minor. In addition, by right, this project can do over thirty-six units, so what we're really asking for is that difference, and it is a significant difference, it's twice as many units, right? It's, it's two, two-hundred times the amount of units that we would have by right, but that's what's required to fill a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-square-foot building, in a way where you're building it out and it makes financial, just viability. We're not talking, this is enormous, we're giving thirty-five percent for affordability. So we take all the affordability off, and we're probably doing even better on this project with those losses of thirty-six units. So financially, that's, you want affordability, you want the building to actually work and be viable, we're down to the bone on this. Okay.
Anyone else? Go on.
Just really quick, I agree with Mr. Scound and, and his thoughts. The only downside, you know, of, of this project, to me, is what we're doing to this area, with the traffic and everything else that's going on, that's the negative part. But I'm glad to see that these mills will be built, and that there'll be people living in them. Certainly, there's a plus for Cumberland, and this, as we all know, is not the first mill project in the town. So I applaud the developers and all the time and energy that they've put into it, also our town planner and his staff, I think they've done a great job with this also, so I wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Anyone else? Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I know I'm the motion maker, but because, because I'm in the, the negative, it would be better if somebody who's gonna vote yes makes the motion.
But, you know, Mr. Butler, you're so good at it. Mr. Chair, I could take a stab at it.
But, but I understand.
I'll make a motion to approve the Norshon Mill project, including the, the adjustments for residential density, landscape buffer, non-commercial use in a mixed-use zone, parking space setback, lot coverage, and parking aisle width. Is that sufficient?
You wanna, I think, do you wanna include the conditions as well in the staff report?
Where are the conditions?
I would just say, your motions should always incorporate the staff's recommendations, because they have to write a decision, so, you know, they're gonna add the, just a learning opportunity, so you'll be second to Mr. Butler going forward.
Great.
So you, you always wanna incorporate the staff's comments if you agree with them, as well as any conditions.
All right. All right, well, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Norshon Mill project, located at thirty-two Meeting Street, including the conditions, as stated in the findings of fact, in the planning department staff report, which include revising the traffic impact assessment to include a warrant for a light at Mill Street, secure the property to the satisfaction of the building official and fire department, merge assessors plot two lots seventeen, one-sixty-two, one-sixty-three, one-sixty-five, one-sixty-six, one-sixty-seven, and one-sixty-eight via administrative subdivision, merge assessors plat lot, uh, assessors plat two lots one-seventy-six, sorry, one-seventy-seven and one-seventy-eight via administrative subdivision, and submit a revised landscape plan stamped by a registered landscape architect that shows a six-foot-high fence and vegetative buffer along the east and west edges of the property to screen the parking lots. How's that? As stated in the memo dated June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you. How's that? Thank you, everybody.
End of motion.
End of motion?
Yeah, okay, end of, end of. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Zuck. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dombrosia? Any other discussion?
Okay. I will take a roll call vote, because I know we, this item will require, so, Mr. Zuck?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Butler?
No.
Mr. Scound?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrosia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuttu is yes. Motion carries, six in the a's and two in the n's.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving right along. This is a public meeting for pre-application, major land development, comprehensive permit, project name, three-seven-one Bound Road, owner applicant, Mahalia Holding LLC, location three-six-nine and three-seven, three-seven-one Bound Road, assessors plat five-zero, lots twenty-one and twenty-two, zoning C1 with public order and public sewer. The applicant proposes to construct one building with thirty-eight rental units, where nineteen fifty percent will be designated affordable.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, but before you start this, I just wanna be clear, because I had a conversation with a couple of the Butters. I, I just wanna be clear that this is a pre-application, which does not require notice to a Butters. So that's why no one got notice. I also want to acknowledge, and this is for the planning staff as well, our map geo, the GIS system, when it, when it populates in a Butters list, it does not consider anything that's located outside of Cumberland. So when you generate in a Butters list, you have to make sure that the applicant gives you the Butters in other communities, and this is the first time I've seen this. So, Mr. Gomes, you, you will be notified at your PO box address. And Mr. Contra, Contra, he lives in Wood Socket, so, and then maybe other, is it, I think there's three properties that are in Wood Socket that need to be noticed. So I just wanted to say that, so everybody knows, you weren't supposed to get notice, but you will in the, in the next round.
Great.
Here's McBarry.
Thank you. So the project is located at three-sixty-nine and three-seventy-one Bound Road in northwest Cumberland at the Wood Socket border. On three-seventy-one Bound Road, there's an existing one-story commercial building. At three-sixty-nine Bound Road, it's an undeveloped wooded lot. There's also a, a paper street that sits adjacent to both properties called Clara Lane. The surrounding area includes single-family homes in Cumberland, and then commercial and multifamily buildings in Wood Socket. So the proposal is for a three-story, thirty-eight-unit rental apartment building under a comprehensive permit. There will be nineteen one-bedroom and nineteen two-bedroom units at fifty percent affordable, so nineteen, and then fifty-one parking spaces are proposed. So the total acreage of the property is two-point-three-three acres, but then there's two-point-one acres of buildable land after deducting wetlands and wetland buffers. The zoning allows nineteen units by right, so with a fifty percent, so with fifty percent of the project affordable, the planning board shall grant a density bonus of at least eighteen units. The applicant is proposing thirty-eight units in total, which is one over the thirty-seven, to keep an even fifty-fifty split of market rate and affordable units. I'd just like to note again that the applicant is asking for the minimum density bonus required besides an additional one. So there are four adjustments that are required, first for residential density, so doubling the units from the by right nineteen to thirty-eight, while it's allowed under a comprehensive permit, still requires an adjustment. There's an adjustment for not having a commercial use, so in C1 zones, they allow mixed use in order to get residential, but this is residential only, as a comprehensive permit does not allow for commercial use. So the applicant seeks relief from having a residential use without a commercial use in a C1 zone. There's also multi-household dwelling use, so because, like I said, there's no commercial use, that becomes the primary, or the principal use on the property, and that's not permitted in a C1 zone. And then there's some adjustments that are needed for setbacks in parking areas. So to conclude, the project is practically right at the required density bonus for fifty percent affordable housing, and it adds meaningful new rental options to the town, especially for lower-income households. Thank you.
What, have any questions for Ms. McBarry?
Uh, you may have said it, and I just was reading and not been, um, is it eighty percent affordable?
No, fifty.
Fifty, it's fifty percent affordable units, but what's the affordable?
I believe, I believe it's eighty.
Yeah, the area being for rentals, it can be no more than eighty percent.
And with the fifty percent affordable by right, they get thirty-seven units? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. Can you explain, can you explain the, the, what's happening with the commercial? So you're saying it's not allowed?
Yeah, so, it's a little complicated, so in C1 zone, there's mixed use in order to get residential, so you can't just have straight-up residential in a commercial zone, but, um, this is only residential as, in, with a comprehensive permit, you can't have commercial. So.
I think, you can maybe explain, I think that's like double-dipping, you get to have all more residential units, and then you're compounding it and you're having commercial units, so I think that...
There's no commercial being proposed.
No.
Yeah, so this is just, one of the adjustments is, instead of requiring commercial in a C1 zone, there's no commercial, that's all.
And, and that's because the...
Comprehensive permit doesn't allow for commercial, but also, they're just, they're also not proposing commercial.
Right, that's, it's really just, they're not proposing commercial.
Okay.
You wouldn't be able to accept a comprehensive permit application that proposes commercial, but that's, it's not relevant to this application.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
It's just the adjustment, it's the adjustment that they're asking for is essentially a use variance or a zone change from C1 to R3, and then plus density. It's just one of the adjustments.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
If we can't talk about this, feel free to stop. Is there another development happening in this? I know this seems to be a controversial thing in the Wood Socket area, because there's another development that's very close to this development, and so as a, is that, am I not remembering that, I seem to remember reading something in The Breeze about a much larger development in Wood Socket that would butt up against this one, and so it's, or it's close to this one, or?
Close, it's north of Cumberland, where this is more west.
Okay.
I don't think the roads connect, so I don't think, if people living there can't get directly to the site.
Any other questions? We'll hear from the applicant.
Hello, Jeff Lykins, the architect for the project.
Say your last name, please.
L-Y-K-I-N-S, yep. So, I think staff did an excellent job already explaining the project, but I'll, I'll go over it a little bit. So, yeah, as indicated, we're proposing one new three-story building. There is a commercial building there now, and it's the owner's intent to keep that going as long as he can, just to generate cash, but it would ultimately have to be demolished before this project can be completed. So the completed project will be just this one building, this residential building. As you've heard, the, the numbers bear out, we're looking for one additional unit to make it even fifty-fifty when we, we split up the affordable and, and the regular red units. Also makes the architecture easier, too, to have an even number of units. We're not asking for too much relief, and I believe we have, currently, we have one parking space that, I believe there's a ten-foot setback, and I'm eight foot, eight inches, it doesn't show on the plan, I didn't notice that till the staff had brought it up, that they thought it looked close, and they're correct, it's eight foot, eight inches from the setback. But I believe we can, we can adjust that before our next, our next meeting, and take care of that, get that few extra feet in there. From our last meeting, previously, we just had parking behind the building, and we only had the one space per unit. After hearing from some really good comments last time, we wrapped the parking around the building, which gave us an extra thirteen spaces, so we do have some additional parking for the units. And also, it makes emergency vehicles and, you know, fire vehicles and stuff, makes it much easier for them, because now they can come in one way and out the other, you don't have to turn around to, to come in and get back out of the property. The, and that one parking space, I get, I don't know if that, if you wanna discuss that one or not, if that, I don't know how picky that is, but that setback is up against a paper road, so it's not like it's up against somebody else's property. So I think that's the gist of it, you know, we have a mix of one and two bedrooms. I think that, that's all I have for it. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Three stories, correct?
I'm sorry?
Three sto, three stories, three floors?
I still couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Three floors?
Oh, yes, three floors, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
What about elevators?
Yeah, it's not required in, in, for a three-story building, and, and given the nature of this with the affordable housing, not really affordable, so to speak. As far as accessibility goes, we have, the first floor will be totally accessible, so and by code, by building code, we're required, I believe, with the amount of units we have, we have to provide one unit fully accessible, you know, all set up, and then all the other units have to be able to be made accessible. So the twelve units, all twelve units on the first floor can be made accessible, and all the blocking will be put in the walls, and the cabinets will be built so that they can be adjusted, yeah.
What about someone with a handicap?
So that's what I was just saying, the whole first floor, every unit, every... So that's why I was just saying, the whole first floor, every unit can be handicap.
They restrict it to the first floor?
So, yes, that's 12 units.
Wouldn't get me in that place.
Okay.
I'm not allowed a third floor.
No, no. So by law, we have to provide one unit that's fully handicap accessible when it's finished. It'll have all the grab bars and the space under the sinks and all that. Every other unit on that floor will have to be made so that you can make it accessible. So you would have to be able to take the cabinets out under the sinks, and all the blocking has to be already in the walls, and the space has to be big enough, you know, and all the spaces for a handicap unit. So that's required by state law.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Zog.
Thank you. In the technical review committee meeting on May 20th, I'm reading from the minutes here, Superintendent Thornton stated that the school nearest to the development, Community School, is 25 to 30 students under capacity. With this development, it is highly likely that the school would go over capacity. I wondered if you had a more specific projection of how many school-aged kids would be anticipated to be added with this project?
Yeah, I really couldn't say. We don't know who the renters will be. So, yeah, I don't know.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. You could ask for a fiscal impact study. I mean, I won't comment on how many school-aged children, but it's not going to be a lot for this number of units. I just do... I do this all the time. It's not going to be a lot projected. Also, that's not one of your required findings. So school-aged children is not something that you can deny a project based on. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. This is DeBrosia.
Looking at the site plan and page northwest, the parking lot, I think you mentioned that you had been able to put an additional 13 spaces into the lot.
Yes.
So do you have more than what is required?
Right.
So my comment then is, if you look at where the wetland setbacks are, there appears to be some infringement into the buffer zone.
Well, there's two levels of buffer from the wetland, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not talking about the building setback. I'm talking about the 25-foot wetland buffer.
So it's my understanding, and I hope I'm right, but so there's three concentric circles, so to speak. The most inner one is the actual wetland. The next two are buffers. So the most outer one is a buffer that a building cannot be in.
Right.
Right. But it's my understanding that a parking can be in that section.
Right. So the wetland that is actually on the property adjacent to it, the buffer zone, the second concentric ring is overlapping your roadway?
Yeah, you're right. It looks like maybe a foot or so. Yeah, so, good point, yeah.
I mean, and...
We can fix that.
Best practices are, you know, obviously trying to stay out of the wetland buffer zones anyway.
Right.
So if you have extra art, then maybe it's worth trying to get some of that pavement out of that zone.
Thank you.
I've seen in another floor plan, the entrance to the units, the kitchen's right there. As you walk in, you walk into the kitchen?
Right, you're walking past the kitchen, yeah, a little aisle way next to the kitchen, uh-huh. So you can come in and put your groceries right away.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. It just seems odd to me, that's all.
Okay.
Do you have any other comments? Now's the time to make any comments.
I just want to make a comment so that I'm not... I'm being consistent. The design of this project, to me, again, looks commercial. So I said that with the last one, even though we can't compare, I have to state the same thing. I don't like the design of the project. It's my opinion, and I made that statement with another project, and I want to be consistent.
Yeah, it looks more like an office building.
It's an office building more than an apartment building, and it's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're going to do a 3D rendering. That might help.
It's like little townhouses. A different design, to me, would be more appealing, regardless where it is in town. And that's... This looks office or...
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Castor?
I'm just curious, why wouldn't you do a trust group on this? Why are you doing a flat roof? Especially in the room. It's likely there's a lot of issues down the road, I would think. I'm not a designer, but the experience that I've had in working places that I have worked for the last 30 to 40 years with flat roofs, always a problem, always a problem.
Yeah, appreciate it. Yeah, part of the decision process was it's an 82-foot span front to back, so it's... It'd really get extremely tall and a lot more roofing material, but I understand it is a thought.
Anything else? Okay. You know, we don't take any action on this at all.
You don't have to take any action. I know that there are butters in the room often. I think almost always give an opportunity to comment.
I can do that. If there's anyone here who has a comment or a question, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record.
Robert Combs, last name is Geo Amies. I live at 363 Bound Road. I'm near a butter to that property, and I've been there for 30 years. I dealt with the problem with the commercial building that is now. It's constant rats. People always dumping off mattresses and box springs. I've been to the town hall before to show pictures of it. I just... I don't want... I just don't want this thing to go through. And you know how you were talking about the project you mentioned about? That is coming, and it's coming right down the end of Bound Road. So when you cross over Pine Swamp, go right straight to the end, it's coming back out. So that's how that's going to happen. So you're going to have a big disaster. Traffic, fire, everything is going to happen right at that intersection. I've been there for 30 years. I know exactly what that street and that main drag is, and it's atrocious. And I don't want this thing to go through. I'm going to fight it right to the end if I have to.
Good evening. I've been a resident of 609 Granview Avenue in Wind Socket. I am also on a butter directly across the street. There's a lot of questions I have about the project. I haven't seen a plan. I was told that I can see it online.
What is your name, sir?
My name is Kazmir, K-A-Z-M-I-R-Z. Kontry, K-O-N-T-R-Y. You're welcome. So I would like to see exactly where the entrance is going to be. I would also have a question. Originally, in the article that I read in The Valley Breeze, there was a mention about the demolition of the existing convenience store and restaurant that's in that parking lot. I don't know if that's going to be removed. Is that part of the project, or is that going to remain there? It's going to be removed.
Mr. Kontry, you have to direct your comments to the chair.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I'd like to know if that building is going to be removed. It's presently still there. It's empty as far as I know, but I saw a sign the other morning that it's going to be rented to Thai Food. So I'm just confused about what the intention is with the space that's going to be involved for the number of cars that are going to be involved in this complex. They're talking about 38 units. Right now, they're saying half of them, 19, will be affordable. My other concern is, if the 19 affordable units are filled and they have a difficulty filling the other units, will the other ones also become affordable? Is that... That's a no? Thank you. So that's one of my concerns. Also, the setback off of Bound Road. Not sure where the entrance will be, as I said. Concerned about traffic coming in. Right now, it's a relatively busy area. If you're familiar with the location, at the right on Bound Road, many residents who live in the area will take a cut-through and go down Granview Avenue all the way to Bound Road, all the way down to the Menden Road intersection where the fire station is. So with that additional traffic, I'm concerned about the fact that there isn't any sidewalks in that area, and it's difficult to maneuver in that section. I'm also concerned, when we built it, when it was built, I was told there's a lot of ledge in the area. Several people in that area have tried to build in swimming pools, and they have run into a ledge issue. I'm concerned that with a project this large, if they run into ledge, there's going to be brasting involved. Those are things that I've been thinking about over the past few months when this was first mentioned. I'm not opposed to a project being built there, single-family homes. If that's something that's feasible, I could live with that. And it's just that the size of this unit, again, I haven't seen drawings of it. I hope to be able to find it online. I'm just concerned the size of this building was going to dwarf my entire property. And as I say, 48 years, it's been a pretty nice setup over there. There was an attempt to develop that, I think, 20-something years ago, and the gentleman was unable to do so because the market kind of fell through and everything went down. So it was just kind of squashed until this present time now. So again, I guess there'll be another meeting, and I will be notified. Is that correct?
Yeah, you will be notified. And I also just want to be clear. I told you that there were plans on the website for convenience, but there's plans also in the planning department. So you can contact the planning department if you don't use computers or whatever, either place.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm interested in that. Yeah, so those are my concerns. Again, I know people have to live places, and I know places have to be developed. I'm just concerned that being that close to me, and the other problem, I guess, will be down the road, there's going to have to be water supplied, right? And I understand it'll have to probably come from Wind Socket. The water pressure in the Wind Socket area right now where we live is just about at a minimum. So all of us that live up there know that. To supply another 38 units and possible five residentials, I just see that as becoming more of a conflict and a problem for all of us that have been there a long, long time. So I appreciate you listening to me, and I hope that when the next meeting comes up, I'll be able to get involved. Thank you.
That building that's there now will be demolished.
Excuse me?
The building that exists there will be demolished.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randy Jakes, J-A-A-C-K-S. I live at 359 Bound Road. I've lived there for 25 years. And when I first moved in there, that road was basically a gravel road. I mean, it was asphalted at one time, but it was all broken up. But since they asphalted it, the place has become a speedway. And it's a shortcut for people trying to get down to Menden Road, 99. The project you were asking about is a 290-unit project in the woods at the end of Bound Road on the Mass Rhode Island Line, New England Country Club wooded area. So if that goes through, that intersection is going to be crazy. And I mean, it's bad enough now. There was one year I was living there, and there was five cars that were T-boned in two months at that stoplight. And it's just people trying to be courteous. Instead of coming through in the through lane, you've got two lanes that come up the top of the hill, and then the lane drops off by the gas station there. So the guy sitting in the middle lane is letting the person that wants to turn on Bound Road, but not thinking about the lane, the outside lane, and the car turns and they get hammered. So five times in two months. And it's pretty crazy up there. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone in the queue? Okay. Oh, I think you've got our comments, and you heard from some of the butters. So I'll give you an idea of where we're going with this.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just under the wire here. Item number 10. We don't start anything, okay? We're under the wire. Do you want to go or just?
It's the last one, and they've literally been in the hallway since 6:30.
I did talk to the attorney. He said he would take 10 minutes, which I hope, because... Yeah.
Okay. All right. The next item is a pre-application major land development comprehensive permit for Blackstone Residences, 618 Broad Street. Applicant Motto Development LLC, location 618 Broad Street, set as flat 11, lot 69, Zone C1 with public water and sewer. The applicant proposes a 16-unit development in five buildings. Four of the units will be designated as affordable. Mr. Motto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the board saw this project last month. It was a 21-unit development, and I believe six of the units are 28% were going to be designated as affordable. These are condominium units. That plan that you saw last month was one large building of three stories, 21 units. The board expressed some concern regarding the density of the project, the height enassing of the building, and the general site layout, and in terms of not incorporating enough landscaping. So the applicant has redesigned the project substantially, I think. They're now proposing 16 units, four of which are going to be affordable. Rather than one big building, they've broken it up as a cottage cluster. So you have five smaller buildings with two to four units. And they've tried, and we'll still need to see a landscape plan, but now there's more opportunity to have some more green space. And it's a little more compatible with what we have just to the south, with the brick worker housing associated with the Ananhope Mill. In terms of the density that's currently being proposed, the density per acre, I think we have 19 and 1/2 units per acre for what is being proposed. And if you want to compare that to the worker housing right next door, it's about 19 units per acre. So it's very... It's just about the same for that area. I think that's all I have. So if you have any questions, we have it answered them.
Would I have any questions for Mr. Motto? Hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it does look like everyone has... Dylan Conley on behalf of the applicant, and I don't want to take your time unnecessarily, but we really wanted to...
and I don't want to take your time unnecessarily, but we really wanted to come back and sort of get your reaction. We felt like the message was to break the building up, to go with smaller massing, to reduce the density. We've gone with an approach that significantly increases the parking per unit. I think we're pretty close to two parking spaces per unit, we were not close to that figure on the previous application. We think the size and scale of the buildings is very, very similar to the worker housing next door, which inherently lended itself to being similar in density. I really, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I would love to hear from you all, you know, is this the direction you wanted us to move in? Are we getting, are we going in the right way? What comes to your mind?
I'll start.
Mr. Zook.
Thank you. Last time I was somebody that criticized the exterior appearance of the plan. I like this exterior appearance a whole lot more, I like the fact that it definitely ties into the, the mill housing adjacent to the property. From an aesthetic point of view, just something that strikes me when I look at this is the, that one three-unit building, I think it's the northernmost, it, it kind of, looks kind of funny out there. And in my perfect world, I'd love to have green space there instead of that building. I don't know if that's financially feasible, but you wanted my reaction, and that's, do you know the one I'm looking at?
Yep, yep.
Yeah. It's kind of angled at a funny direction, although it's, it makes sense with the, the existing buildings behind it. But, yeah, it just looks like it's kind of out there a little bit.
The, rotating it is definitely an option if we move into some of the setbacks, so it's more square to the remainder of the site. We were trying really hard to avoid unnecessarily occupying setbacks, especially ones with actually, there's a home right next to it. So, you know, if there's a preference for rotation, we don't have an issue with that. Unit count, because of the way the twenty-five percent works, if a loss in three is a loss of four, and that's tough.
And actually, to sort of respond to what you just said about rotating it, yeah, aesthetically I would like to see it rotated, but if it meant needing additional setbacks, I probably wouldn't be a fan of that, so. Yeah, my opinion would be if it's a, a question of either leaving it there or rotating it and needing more setbacks, my preference would be to leave it where it is in this plan. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Reese?
I also like the way the buildings are now. I think I also criticized your commercial looking, and that I want to see the townhouses like the next one, so thank you for doing that. The green space, at least you have some of it that I also mentioned. I think my neighbor may have a question about the road, so I'm gonna leave that out. I think in general, I think much of improvement from what I saw before, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dembroja.
Yeah, I will kind of echo what everybody's been saying, I think the, the scale of it's a lot nicer, a lot more fitting of the neighborhood. As Ms. Reese mentioned, my question is, have, have you guys taken a look at vehicle movement on the site? Specifically, you know, if there's gonna be a trash truck, emergency vehicles, right now it's kind of an L-shaped roadway, which doesn't seem to lend itself to a fire truck being able to turn around. So, you know, this clearly looks like a pretty quick plan, that hasn't been really engineered so much.
It is, I think that's a really important point, and I, I want to address that directly. It is probably the thirtieth layout that we've done, trying to crack the code of this slope with that angular jut. So, your points are all well-taken, and no, this has not been studied in detail, but to get to this was the result of an incredible amount of study. So, work to do, for sure, but to find anything that started a pencil that wasn't a big building was a significant lift.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you'll, if you guys take this in front of the TRC, I'm sure that they'll have the expertise on how to guide you with those movements.
Thank you.
So, I'd say I agree with my colleagues, I think visually it's much better, I think the density is much better than where you were last month. I agree with Mr. Dembroja, when I looked at it, I, for whatever reason, immediately thought of the Amazon trucks. Where would you put the dumpster and that kind of stuff, and turnarounds, but as he said, and you said, you know, it's something that can get worked out at the TRC level, but I think you definitely took our feedback and came back with something that's a lot more palatable, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Zook, you talked about turning a unit?
Yes, my.
This one?
That one, yes, yeah. My initial thought is that it, it seemed odd in its orientation. But I wouldn't want to advocate turning it if it meant needing additional adjustments as far as the setbacks are concerned. I like to honor those.
I agree with you, if, if, if it works to turn it, fine, but, you know, the biggest thing I think is what Mr. Dembroja said, is to work out and ensure that the turning movements in the site are favorable to, yeah, we, we can talk about the, the FedEx guys and everything, but more importantly, our public safety people, that's paramount. So, I'm sure that they will give you a little bit of guidance there with that, too. But again, I like the, the building looks so much nicer, it almost blends in perfectly with the rest of the mill, the old mill houses, it has that same kind of look, and I like the, you know, the gable roofs on top. If that, it, it just looks good, it looks much better.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anything else you want from us, you know, questions or anything?
No, and I appreciate everyone staying late for us to make sure that we were actually doing what you wanted us to do. It was a really big deal before we, you know, put a bunch of money into engineering the rest of the site. So, this is really valuable to us, really appreciate it.
Well, that's the, that's the beauty of going through pre-application.
Absolutely, absolutely. It, it took a few, I have paper scraps, I was cutting things out and like taping them on the site, and I mean, it was. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We only have one other thing, and that's the ordinance, so we might as well clear it away.
You want to do it?
Because, because the town council's gonna be waiting on this, so. So, item number fourteen, Town Council Recommendation, Ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Eighteen, and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance relating to contract construction service. The ordinance amends the zoning ordinance by adding contract construction service, including outdoor storage and contract construction service, not including outdoor storage, but contract construction service, including outdoor storage. Well, for permitted use in C-two zones, additionally, this ordinance amends the zoning ordinance by adding open space zone to six-dash-nine buffer requirements when C or I zones but A or R zones. Ms. McBarry?
Yeah, so right now all construction service businesses are treated the same under zoning, even though some operate entirely indoors while others operate and have outdoor storage. So, that one-size-fits-all approach creates unnecessary hurdles. The ordinance will make three key changes, first, it creates two categories for contract construction services with outdoor storage, and then without outdoor storage, it reduces restrictions for indoor-only businesses, so fully indoor businesses falling under the contract construction use will now be allowed by right in C-two zones. That gets rid of the need for them to acquire a special use permit, which requires the installation of fencing and plantings that are meant to screen outdoor activities because there aren't any. And then it strengthens buffers where needed, so previously, Section Six-Nine of the zoning ordinance only required buffers when commercial and industrial zones were next to residential and agricultural zones, we're now adding in open space zones to that. This amendment supports economic development by easing rules for low-impact businesses, it protects neighborhoods in open space by keeping strong buffers where outdoor or intensive uses exist. So, therefore, the planning department recommends a favorable, recommends a favorable vote. This ordinance balances smart growth with neighborhood protection and aligns with the comprehensive plan.
Board, have any questions or comments for Ms. McBarry? It makes sense to me.
Same.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send a recommendation to the town council that ordinance Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Eighteen meets the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan for the reasons outlined in the staff memo dated June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler, do I have a second? Second one is Reese. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Ayes.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the chair votes yes. One more motion.
Move toward Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Scum. Seconded by the entire board, all in favor?